Okay, good evening. Good evening. We are about to begin the Town of Camden Select Board meeting for May 20th. The Select Board meetings are streamed at youtube.com Town of Camden Maine. And those wishing participate remotely, they can click on the link to join the meeting by Zoom. Before we begin the agenda, we do have a couple of things to do. One is to go through the in memoriam on the town report. And we have three people to recognize, Ed Duder, Tom Cantrell, and Marlene Libby. Ed Duder arrived in Camden from Boston with his future wife Vicki in 1986 when they purchased and renovated what would become the Blackberry Inn. During their time as innkeepers, Ed became renowned for his apricot French toast and brie souffle. He also started his law practice then, working first from the inn and later in an office downtown. He continued his legal education after the couple sold the inn and in 2005, Ed earned a master of law degree in intellectual property and technology. His law practice grew to involve business creation and representation, copyright and trademark issues, and matters involving real estate. From 2009 to 11, Ed served on Camden's Budget Committee and he's also a member of the Five Town CSD Board of Directors during the planning for the new Camden Hills Regional High School. Retiring as an attorney in 2019, Ed further turned his attention to the community, though he continued preferring to do good behind the scenes. For example, he helped families attain affordable housing by providing pro bono legal services to Midcoast Habitat for Humanity, which has continued to grow, thanks in part to his insight and willingness to serve. He also volunteered his expertise on many other nonprofit boards and organizations, including the Pitcher Pond Association, Saltwater Classroom, and Knox Clinic, where he was vice president of the Board of Directors and most recently in the process of helping expand their dental clinic in new primary care practice in Rockland. Ed's strong sense of fairness, justice, and honesty and his ability to make things happen will all be missed in Camden. Also, Tom Cantrell, born in Presque Isle, Tom grew up in Camden and dedicated 40 years to the community as a volunteer with Camden Fire Department. He also volunteered with the Maker Wish Foundation and spent his time in Honduras, Jamaica, Guatemala, and Haiti for humanitarian work. An avid athlete, he pitched for the Smiling Cow Adult Softball Team and secured more than 100 wins. Tom was a well-known face around town when police or firefighters were needed. Because when you came upon a situation, Tom was one of the fire police most often seen blocking traffic and helping with directions. He began serving with the Fire Department in 1983 and in December 2023 was recognized by his peers for his service to the community in the department. He also was an EMT and served many years with Camden First Aid Association. Tom was known for his being friendly, conversational, and also fun-loving, kind and outgoing. He'll be deeply missed, but his spirit will live on through through everyone he knew and all the lives he touched. And finally, Marlene Libby. Marlene Libby, wife of Camden Cemetery sexton Bruce Libby, worked for the Town of Camden for 35 years. Beginning her career as Camden's wastewater harbor clerk in 89, she later was appointed as the town's treasurer and accountant, interim finance director, and finally deputy finance director. The position she held until December 2024. Marlene fought a brave battle with breast cancer, continuing to work remotely from home during 18 months of treatment. She resolutely endured. Marlene had such a vast knowledge of every function of the municipality, it was affectionately said that she could have managed the town by herself. While we mourn her death and celebrate her life, we note that Marlene was also committed to the town of Appleton where she and Bruce lived. In 2022, the Appleton Select Board dedicated that year's town report to Marlene in honor of her commitment to the town, the town office, and her fellow residents. She served on the Appleton Select Board in both towns. Marlene happily volunteered her time and assisted with many different endeavors that benefited coworkers and the community alike. She was a great listener, a dedicated worker, a faithful friend, and everybody's favorite office babysitter. Her warm smile and gentle demeanor are missed and the depth of her bravery will be of her bravery will be remembered by everyone who knew her. So we can take a moment. The next is what we do every year where we make a dedication of the town annual report, and this year we're pleased to dedicate that to Elaine Davis. The Town of Camden is pleased to dedicate this year's annual report to Elaine Alley Davis, who for decades has been a steadfast servant to the community and a guardian of our democratic process. For more than 30 years, Elaine has volunteered as an election worker and deputy registrar of voters, ensuring that each vote is cast and counted with integrity and that every local election runs smoothly. Elaine's volunteer resume is astonishing in its breadth. If you've ever benefited from the Camden Area District Nursing Association, you have Elaine to thank. She has served on the Camden Board for years, many as board president, helping steer the 100-year-old home nursing service into the future. Elaine has been a steadfast champion for the elderly and and the vulnerable, ensuring angels of care are there for those who need it. That really is how people have talked about the things she's been involved with and described Elaine, a guardian angel who showed up when the need is greatest. For those of you who have enjoyed the inclusion of all our of all our citizens in town life, you witnessed Elaine's influence as a friend and advocate to neighbors with disabilities through coastal opportunity. She's the smiling volunteer at the Cash for Clothes Sale and often the engine behind it. The driver making sure her friend gets to church on Sunday and the kindly mentor bridging generations. At the First Congregational Church of Camden, Elaine's helping hands have lifted up many. For decades, she has led the church's Dove Tree Project quietly delivering Christmas gifts and food to all local families in need. In the wider community, Elaine has never hesitated to answer the call. She's been a fundraiser, a shoulder to lean on in times of illness or grief, and an election clerk, a true go-to person when something needs doing. During her tenure with the town, Elaine has worked every election, starting when all the work was done by hand. Back then, she and Sid Lindsay, former Select Board member, entered all the voter registration cards and prepared bulk mailings to Camden's registered voters to update the rolls. She continues pre-election work and is always at the registrar's table for town elections. For 23 years, Elaine has also visited the local nursing homes with registrar Katrina Oaks, helping residents cast their votes and update their voting party and registration information. She is readily described as literally the most thoughtful person I know. One time during an election, a coworker mentioned they were hungry and Elaine offered them her lunch, saying that she was going home earlier than them and could get something to eat then. She also once offered her shoes to someone whose feet were sore from standing for hours on the concrete that Elaine herself had been standing on too. I hope they fit. Those who know Elaine speak of her boundless kindness, reliability, and humility. She seeks no fanfare and you might not realize how many lives she's touched because she prefers working behind the scenes. But ask anyone from a nursing patient she comforted or a child who found a gift on their doorstep to a colleague or a volunteer board, and the stories pour forth of Elaine showing up, helping out, and making a difference. She is one of the quiet architects of Camden's strong social fabric, described in a 2022 Penobscot Bay Pilot article honoring late historian Barbara Dyer as part of the network of strong Camden women who keep the town intact, watching out for those in need. Whether she is power walking around town early in the morning with her daughter Jennifer, or rearranging medical supplies for Camden Area District Nursing Association in the overflow storage container that she tends at Chiplate's property, she is known for always being on the move. Elaine is described by everyone we asked as a worker, not a talker, quietly getting things done wherever she goes and always doing something good. A fellow volunteer said she is impossible to say no to, and we encourage all residents to say yes to Elaine. Through her quiet, steady service so many across so many facets of town life, Elaine Davis has touched countless lives and strengthened the fabric of our community. The Town of Camden extends its deepest gratitude to Elaine for extraordinary contributions and tireless dedication to our town. Thank you for your patience. And with that, we will continue on with the agenda as presented. Are there any public comments on any of the non-agenda items? Seeing none, no other comments? Okay, great. Next item then is approval of board minutes for April 15 and also for May 6 that are part of the meeting packet. Are there any recommended adjustments to the meetings?
Motion to approve the minutes for both meetings.
And a quick vote? Motion to approve?
I've motioned and can second.
Yep. There we go. Awesome. We have public hearings for Barron's Restaurant, Two Way Fair Drive for renewal of a Class A restaurant liquor license. Is there anyone here from Barron's? How about item B Camden? Oh, I'm gonna butcher that, Charcuterie at 56 Elm Street? Unit A for a Class A restaurant liquor license? Anyone from that group? No? Peter Otz, new owners at 16 Bayview Landing for a Class A restaurant liquor license. Would you like a moment to, if you have any questions, comments? If you do, and for anyone who does, stand at the podium, we have to make sure the mic is on, it's got to be green. Say who you are, where you live, and what you'd like to mention.
Wow, new owners of Peter Otz, I didn't know that.
What's that?
I didn't know there were new owners.
Well, Peter and Jamie are friends of mine and
Oh, okay.
I'll tell you.
Introduce yourself for those.
For those somewhere else. My name is Dale Turk, I live in Lincolnville just over the border, so don't hold that against me. But Peter and Jamie are friends of mine and I'll tell you the quick joke that I asked Peter, what's the price for this? And he's up here, I go, what's my price? He goes down there. So he made an offer I couldn't refuse. So I just hope to pick, he had it for 18 years. Peter Otz has been around for 50 years, I didn't know that. But I'm just hoping to pick it up and take it to the next level.
Wow, well, welcome. I was a bartender at Peter Otz for a while and before that. Are you ever considering bringing the salad bar back?
I didn't, wasn't aware of that, but I will tell you this. I have four wonderful managers that have been in the business for years and I'll broach that with them tomorrow.
It's controversial, so be careful.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any questions, Ken?
No.
No. Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you.
And Villager Cafe at 25 Mechanic Street for a new Class A restaurant liquor license? Anyone representing them? No?
Salt Wharf.
Salt Wharf at Three Way Fair Drive? Anyone from Salt Wharf? No. Okay. Do we have a motion?
Yes, I'll move that we approve the liquor licenses for A through E as listed.
Second.
Any further discussion? And then vote? Motion passes 3-0. We have a couple of items on the consent agenda. The approval of the Victroler and Lodging Licenses for Blue Herring, Camden Carcature, I think we'll have to make simpler names. Camden, yeah, Camden Cone, I like that name. Cedar Crest Inn, Fresh Restaurant, Harbor Dogs, Norman Begga Inn, Paper Plane, Peter Ott, Salt Wharf, and Swan House, as well as approval of Camden Hills High School March Through Town on Monday, June 2 at 5:30. Any questions or objections concerning the consent agenda? All right, seeing no objections, the consent agenda is hereby adopted. Item number five. Select Board reports. Anything to report?
I'm a little bit consumed by the fact that my computer isn't turning on right now, so I'm going, no, thank you. I don't think that I have anything urgent to report.
Okay.
Thanks, Chris, I don't either.
Okay, and nor do I have anything to report, so that's quick. However, I bet Audra does, Town Manager's Report, number six.
Quite brief. So for those of you who haven't been to Steamboat Landing, the landing has, the project to rebuild it has been completed, so it's in quite good shape now. It was, it's been torn apart by pretty much every major to even moderate storm, I would say, that we've had in the last, at least since I've been here anyway, so eight years. So we're really happy with the the project as it is, it's going to make it much more resilient into the future, much heavier cement planks that have been laid on the boat launch portion of it, and it's also coincided with new floats that are out there. So the whole area is looking good and it's going to be much more usable for everybody out there. Town reports are available, so we have to jealously guard them until the dedication is made. And since Elaine knows that the report's been dedicated to her, we want to welcome everybody else to come and get a town report. Lot of good information in there and can be really helpful to giving you some background information for voting. Also, we have a main newsletter out and that has brief explanations of all the different warrant articles. So for anybody who just kind of wants the Cliff Notes of what you're being asked to vote on, that's a really good resource. And those are my updates.
So happy to see the newsletter, thank you guys for doing that, it looks great. How do people get that on? I see that there's a, there's a printed version. Is there a mailing list that people can get on or?
Yep, they can get on an email list, there's also, I believe it's posted on the website as well.
Thank you, and the next item is going into the discussion items is the Sagamore Farm Solar Buyout and Expansion. And the way I'd like to do that, if Audra can just give a brief intro to that, and then if anyone from the town is here to talk about that, I'd like to provide people in the town an opportunity before the Select Board discusses that too. Can you just give a quick overview so it provides people context?
Yep, so just a brief overview, in 2017, the town entered into a power purchase agreement with Revision for a solar farm at at Sagamore Farms. So after seven years, the town, I believe it was seven years, it might have been six, the town had the option to buy out the solar array. So instead of, you know, purchasing the power from Revision, who technically owned it, the town would be the owner of the solar array and so all of the electricity that it generates would be used to offset Camden's electricity bills. And we've had a group of residents who have done a lot of research on the buyout and are here to kind of talk more about not just the buyout, but potential expansion at Sagamore Farm of to make it a larger solar array out there, that's something that's also been discussed intermittently in the past. And we've got a group of folks who are willing to, you know, help us with the research and all the different aspects of trying to figure out how we do that in a way that's going to be most beneficial for the town. So I'd like to, I think, I'm not sure if Paul or Esperance are going to come up, but they're going to come and speak to the research that they've done and give you a recommendation. So, thank you, Paul.
Hello, Paul Stanchoff. I gave you a bit of a presentation on this on the April 1 meeting. So this is a little more, we're currently just a group of residents interested in expanding solar for a variety of reasons, including concerns about climate, but also because of the financial advantages of going solar. I'm not really gonna, I wasn't really going to say much about expansion right now. We, as a group, are very interested in, as Audrey said, working with the town on doing research and maybe even getting some kind of go-ahead from the town to consult with with any contractors. But that's not really what I wanted to talk about here tonight. Well, one more thing about that. The, we're really concerned about the the Inflation Reduction Act going out, basically being revoked in this session of Congress and one of the advantages that it has provided to municipalities is that it extended the 30% reef direct pay that we were not able to take advantage of in the past because we weren't a tax-paying entity. Unfortunately, it may well be that this is the last year. Somebody, I heard today that the, a project had to be completed by the end of 2025 to get the IRA rebate. So I don't know where that's going to go. So we're going to look into that just coming up very soon. But basically what I wanted to talk about was the buyout, because as I said the last time I was here, the return on, if you put approximately $200,000 into the buyout, the, it's equivalent to getting a rate of return of about 15 or 16% on a, on an investment. Because after six years, it's completely paid back. According to what we were able to find about the energy, the town's reserve funds, there's 57,000 in the Energy Conservation Reserve and there's the Tree Fine Fund, which is 247,000 roughly. So one way of doing this would be to, for the town to basically move around 140,000 from the Tree Fine Fund to do the buyout and then the, these that money could be replenished at a rate of about 29 or 30,000 a year from the electricity savings. So that would mean basically just shifting the funds or, I don't know if it's called borrowing from yourself and having that payback done. So the savings are obvious, you know, if you look at the financials on that. I sent you all a spreadsheet a while back that, that had come from Revision. I also worked the spreadsheet for different for different rates at which the solar panels would degrade and no matter how you cut it, the return is within seven years, even if, even if they don't form up to what they expected rate of decay is. So that fund basically would be replenished after six years. The, one more point about the panels that comes up when you're talking about the financials on it is the town panels actually generate renewable energy credits or REX. And this is basically you can describe it as currency for the renewable power marketplace. Buying the panels would give us, right now Revision owns the panels and they sell the REX. If we were to buy the panels, we would be able to either sell the REX, they, I think they they expire after a certain number of time, so if you sold the REX, it would generate about $4,500 a year. We as a, the working group, because of, mostly because of our environmental concerns, not a big fans of REX. Because even though they are an incentive to build more solar, they don't always do that in the end. And if you retire the REX, you actually claim credit for the renewable energy. Whereas when you sell the REX, you're not getting the credit for that renewable energy. It's $4,500 a year, that would be the difference. So it's a fairly small portion of the total. So our working group really recommends that Camden retire the REX that are available. Helping the region, basically helping our region reduce greenhouse pollution.
That's all we have for now. Thank you. Is there anybody else who's here tonight or online that wanted to speak to this topic about the solar farm? No?
I think there's, do you think there's a chance that there are people that after hearing what we say might be, might want to reserve their, I know that happens to me at meetings sometimes, I want to hear first what the other people say.
Sure. Now, Audra and I did speak about this earlier because maybe Audrey, you can explain a little bit too about when we discussed this in April and how it aligns with the budget and the, the potential resources that we had identified at the time that maybe aren't there now. And the options that we, we still have to go ahead and do concerning that funding.
Yeah, so, you know, we had talked, we had talked about using the money from, I think we call it the Tree Conservation Reserve Fund. A lot of the, some of the fines for things like, you know, illegal tree removal had been placed in that account. When the Conservation Commission was asked about, you know, the potential of using those funds for the solar buyout, they had concerns about money not being available to treat trees for ash borer, which I guess is in our region, and that's something that we need to start doing proactively. However, there are other, you know, other sources of funding, reserve funds and other things that we've done in the past that we could, that we could do, you know, to move forward with the buyout. And, and as Paul said and his group that's been working on this, you know, it's without question that it's going to save the town money and it's going to be a similar savings to when we bought out all of the streetlights across town and converted them over to LEDs and we save money, not just through electricity, but also for not paying the lease agreement with CMP to lease all the streetlights. So it's going to have a similar savings about $30,000 a year.
And how is it a, how is it a complicating factor to consider the buyout of what's currently there versus buyout and expansion?
I mean, I guess we just don't know what our options are at this stage in terms of the expansion. But I think that, you know, it really ends up depending on what vendor we would work with on an expansion as to, as to how that could all work together. I think, do you have a question, Allison?
A question and a comment, so I think I was sort of responsible for throwing out the crazy idea of using the tree fund, which the Conservation Commission wasn't, wasn't thrilled with that idea. I'm the liaison to the Conservation Commission, but I think they did bring up some really good points and they are preparing a letter to the Select Board that summarizes some of the research. a letter to the Select Board that summarizes some of the research that was done before, just about the, sort of the massive expense we are looking at with that. But I, I do think it's prompted a good conversation. And many people have called Revision, and we've been talking about it in different groups. I had a conversation with a few people at Revision as well. I do feel certainly thoroughly convinced of the, it being a smart financial decision to do the buyout. They, a few of the questions that had come up about maintenance of the system. I was reassured to learn that we can continue with a con, even after the buyout, we can continue with a contract with Revision that would take care of that. And we weren't able to identify any major opportunities that would be given up with an expansion if we were to do the buyout. You know, potentially, if we were going to have to do a loan for both things, it would make sense to do all of that together or whatever. But if, you know, we're able to come up with the money to do it without a loan, it certainly makes even more financial sense. I would, I understand the concept of paying back the tree fund. I think that is messy. So if we were going to move forward with this, I think there are probably two things that I would feel comfortable with. One would be kind of a drag, but it's the special town meeting that we've done in the past. It's the way that we did the, the initial power purchase agreement. And we could scramble to do one of those. The other thing, I think, is because the case is so compelling for the, the, the payback of the decision, if we wanted to do outside of that process, rather than borrowing from the tree fund, I would rather overspend, and, you know, somebody can stop me if this is a total nonstarter, but to overspend the tree concert, excuse me, the Energy Conservation Reserve Fund that Ken had identified before, use that and then, because, because the plan was going to be to use all of that anyway. But over, basically overspend that and which would drop us into the unassigned fund balance, and then we could pay back the Energy Conservation Reserve Fund. And that would allow us to move. Forward.
And and the reason why we don't have it as an action item tonight is because we don't have to make and really don't really want to make a decision tonight, but allow time for us to discuss it and maybe establish a direction that ultimately becomes an action item fairly soon on deciding based on what our discussion is.
So I think we need to let Revision know by when?
June 15.
So that would allow time for us, if we were to ponder that idea and then vote on it next time, it would.
Right, there's not a lot of time.
I mean, I'm comfortable moving forward tonight.
Yes, based on our previous conversation in April, we seem to be generally in favor of the idea of the buyout. I didn't hear a firm number, 200, roughly 200,000. Is there a firm number for what the, what the buyout is?
There is a firm number that's, I think, just a touch over 200,000, right? 206.
So the question is, before you had identified a couple of reserve accounts from which we could draw the funds, and are there funds in other reserve accounts? I mean, can we do this? If we, if we vote as an action item two weeks from now, are there funds?
Yeah, so, you know, we, we've used the method that Allison's talking about before, where we've overspent on, you know, a reserve account and then budgeted in subsequent years to replenish it. So that's, that's something that we've done before, and you could do for this.
Now, based on, you know, we kind of did not, we weren't very supportive of the school doing a special town vote. So I would think that would not be, you know, we can't say, oh, we, you know, we were irritated, or we didn't like the fact that, you know, the school came after the fact with a vote. Is there a way to make substantive changes to the budget without requiring a vote?
That's, the, using the Energy Conservation Reserve Fund, or I forget what the exact wording of that fund is, but that, that is without doing the special town meeting. That would be.
Yeah, you, the Select Board has authority to spend out of our reserve funds.
Because otherwise, the, we'd have to wait till November.
I mean, like.
Change in the budget?
Well, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a change in the budget. So you'd have like a special town meeting, and then, you know, you would be authorizing or having voters authorize
Right.
use of the unassigned fund balance to.
But if we didn't really want to go there, because we said that really didn't make a lot of sense, but if we can, is there a proper way that we can go ahead and reassign funds within the budget?
Yeah, it would be spending out of a reserve account.
Yeah, I would, I would favor going that route. It's the simplest, it gets us where we want to go in the most simple fashion.
Now, what about the whole expansion piece, though? How long will it take to get an understanding of what that's going to entail and whether or not the infrastructure is in place for an expansion? Does that have to be now, or can it be later?
It doesn't have to be now, but I would think that that's something that could be prepared for the FY '27 budget. Because, you know, that's gonna, there's gonna be, depending on what, you know, what method is used to fund or finance it, it could have budgetary impact. So I think that, you know, that's something that they can, we can have prepared and ready to go for then.
So expansion is not necessary?
It's, it's not, I mean, it's not anything that's incredibly timely.
I mean, depending on your perspective, whether you think there's a climate crisis or not. But I, I had felt like, gosh, we should just be looking at this all together and just expand it because we, you know, got hung up on that before. So why don't we just try to bundle this all in together, the buyout and the expansion? There is sort of a possibility of that, but I, I do feel satisfied that we're not, after talking with Paul a bunch and Revision, that there, we, we could just move forward with the buyout, and then we can either move forward really quickly, actually, with an expansion, because they will do another power purchase agreement if we want, where they, we basically don't have to put any money up to do the expansion. But then the rewards for the town financially are not as great with that approach, but it allows us to not have to invest any capital. Or we can go with a different approach where we might do some borrowing of our own, make an investment of our own, and then reap greater long-term rewards. And I think that's part of what this working group is going to be working to kind of work out really semi, semi-quickly what, you know, what might make sense for us to do either right away or in the future.
So we, we've got, how many, how many weeks until, you said, June 15th for Revision? So.
So it could be on as an action item at the.
On the 3rd, is that when it would have to be? And for me, I'd like to see what the difference is between buy it as it currently is and what the gain or payout payoff is over time with it as it is today. And then, you know, what is the harm of waiting until a 2027 budget? So we're not shifting things around, but be direct if we do it, the other piece in 2027.
Maybe $29,000, I think, roughly.
Yeah, I would just like to be sure that we've got those things figured out. And is it, who would be doing that work in between now? And to have it ready for the public, we really would need the information by 30 May.
Yeah, so what, what we can do is, yeah, well, because we have the power purchase agreement and the terms around that. So we can put that in the packet, we can write up a memo that just sort of summarizes that and, you know, explains, you know, what the, what the savings would be in moving forward with the buyout. And it's informing them by June 15th, because they need 90, 90 days.
But as far as for our side, to be able to put the data together with both different courses of action, is that possible by June 30th, by May 30th?
The thing is that it's not, there, there's a rough amount, but it is influenced by electricity prices and all kinds of things. So I think they have done enough work to, to make it clear that it's, it's substantial. You know, it's in the tens of thousands. It, based on minor variables, it can change. Because Revision would give us a different buyout price in a year, and that would might be based on different market factors and the investor and things. But we do have enough information to know the ballpark of the benefit.
My impression is that it's easy to separate the current buyout, and there is a deadline pressure for moving ahead on that. And the other, the, the larger expansion project can be a separate project. We can undertake the investigation and the funding of that as a, as a separate option.
Yes.
I think it would be more fair to show both options. And then we can, as long as there is time to pull that data together, and, and if it's mostly there now, that's awesome.
Well, there, there won't be, there won't be data available for the, for the expansion.
There won't be.
No, but I, I think, you know, what we, what we can, what we can tell you is, you know, we can, as part of the memo that we prepare, kind of explain why there's not, I guess, a big enough benefit to waiting. I just, you know, waiting for the expansion.
You know, that the infrastructure, like, we don't find out after the fact that we needed different lines or whatever it is to be able to handle the additional throughput.
I mean, I'm going to tell you, I went, I agree, I was 100% thinking the same way that, that you are right now, Chris, and went, went around and around with this, as a couple of, of them will tell you. And, because I agreed with you in principle, but I wasn't, after five hours on the phone with various people, wasn't able to substantiate that concern. And so I guess I would hesitate looking at the amount of town staff time and the time that these folks are willing to put in. I guess I would rather see us moving forward with getting this done and then having them make a recommendation on, on moving forward and evaluating the expansion options, because it feels like we have momentum. And that if, you, you may find that if you talk to some of the people or read more in detail, some of the stuff that's already been prepared, you might.
But we can, you know, we can summarize that all and give it to you on the, what is it, June 3rd?
Yeah, yeah, as long as it's ready for the public by May 30th, so that everyone has an opportunity to see it and digest it and consider that. There's a person in the back that would like to speak.
I think Revision would be willing to come too.
I am Barbara Spalding. I live in Camden. I'm part of the, what are we?
Working group.
Solar Working Group. And I think you have this, it's from Revision. Right, you've seen this spreadsheet that shows to them the buyout price, $191,000. They really are two different issues. This current contract, Chris, with Revision, our power purchase agreement, has got the terms and conditions of this one agreement to do this buyout. That has a deadline of June 15th for this year, or we, you know, that $29,000 of electricity savings goes to Revision instead of the town of Camden. The whole project to do an expansion would require an RFP for us to put together, to go to different contractors, to do the engineering and design and insulation costs. To even get someone, we could ballpark an idea, but electricity, solar array pricing is kind of all over the place right now with what's happening. So getting a price, and that is a whole different, there's a whole different funding source available right now for an expansion, this direct pay program that Paul was talking about. So there isn't a benefit at this time, there's no ability to combine these two things because they're two completely different options. And our push for now is to get us to this June 15th, the first year we've had, to buy out our array and to start saving that $29,000, that can go right back into whatever electricity saving, go right back into whatever fund we've taken the money from.
Yeah, that's kind of what my thought was too. It seems like it's, it would be an easier decision to buy out what's currently there and currently working, and then put more time and energy into figuring out the right expansion piece at a later date when things can be a little bit more solidified. But to give people the opportunity to say, okay, we can do this, or we can do that, at least would be a good thing to see. I'd like to have a couple of options that are viable.
What do you mean exactly?
Well, on, on the expansion piece, if, if, because as, again, as it was written here on the agenda, it's about buying out the current piece and the expansion. So if it is, it's actually the way it's written, but that's okay. So if it really is a thing as far as expansion, I'd like to know the details on that. If it is just, you know, buying out what's currently there, that's a lot easier. And that's why I would say it's a, at least an action item to make the final decision on, yeah, okay, we're going to at least buy what's there. And potentially then to say, yeah, we like the idea of this, and there's more work to be done to solidify those items, as you mentioned.
The expansion.
Yeah, to get, to get an RFP and all that, you know, to go down that, that road does take time and effort and understanding and probably then rightfully better placed in a different budget as compared to moving the money around in the current one.
Well, certainly, that could then be properly, but it would have to be properly budgeted.
That's correct.
Signing a contract.
I think for this agenda item, what we can do is we can sort of signal our intention to, to use the reserve fund for the buyout and then also endorse or encourage or authorize the, the group to move forward with evaluating options for expansion. I think it's, that becomes kind of important sometimes when you're talking to different, you know, contractors or whatever, to be able to say, you know, for them to be able to say, the town has encouraged us to be reaching out to, to Revision and to whoever else about the option. So us kind of officially endorsing that concept, I think, is good.
Yeah, thanks. I just have one clarification. In, in the, the working group's memo, it says Revision would continue to maintain and operate the array, so it would require no maintenance work by town employees or other contractors. That's important. Is, is that accurate? Is that something that will be part of the contract with Revision for ongoing maintenance?
But yes, that's what they told me on the phone, and whether that's.
They have several, you probably heard this, Allison, contract options for, I don't know, pretty reasonable prices, I think. But that's something you'd have to work out with them.
Yeah, and it was already, what, it was already factored into the estimated savings.
On that spreadsheet, the.
What wasn't totally clear was, there was a little bit about mowing or not mowing. We may need to also, in terms of the, what we would need to pay right now for the buyout, whether that number already includes a maintenance contract is a little unclear. But we may, so it may be, the numbers they were talking about was like, I think it was actually less than $1,500. So there's a chance we would also need to, from the same reserve fund, pay a maintenance contract of roughly that amount. But it's, you know, insignificant enough that.
That, yes, that spreadsheet had a pretty reasonable sounding.
Is that the O and M?
Yeah, yeah, and had insurance, had O and M, and had inflation and adjustments in it as well.
Yeah, because it's, it's saying maintenance, a maintenance contract of only $1,200 a year?
Yeah, it wasn't too bad.
That's what, with the, one of the things we got from, was it Chris Donovan? Is that who you spoke to?
I, no, apparently, Chris, Chris Donovan apparently is very high up in that organization, and is not usually a front-facing person. They told, so I talked to, they were like, oh.
But he's sent, well, he's.
Right, yes, you guys had a connection straight to the top, apparently. So I talked to Tina, who does more of the communications part, but she's, yeah, she verified that that was all.
So would we have for the May 30th meeting, something in writing that's actually from Revision on what the maintenance costs would be? It sounds like.
No, I guess you guys have to agree to that.
Yeah, because we'll have to.
Yeah, we can, we can have something in.
Yeah, I'd rather have it in writing that's from Revision that says, this is the maintenance, this is the.
This is what's included, and yeah, I'd like to see that too.
This is what's not included, because sometimes maintenance prices can just go nuts. And we want to make sure that, for the investment that we're doing, that we understand all the maintenance costs that are involved. They are, it is an older field. But yeah, I think it would be, I'd be supportive of that being on the agenda for the June 3rd meeting if we can get. meeting if we can get the costs nailed down.
Thank you.
Any, any further discussion on that?
In supportive of them moving for orbit to further research the expansion?
Yeah, yeah, that would be part of the action item on the, on the 3rd, would, we would hope to.
We can't just do that sort of by consensus right now. Otherwise, it's kind of sending the message that like, oh no, don't talk to anybody until we.
I, I would, I would not want to do that right now, no. I would rather make it an action item on June 3rd, and then it should be, should be easy peasy at that point, if we have the data.
Well, I think we, I can get the.
Yeah, yeah, we're definitely not saying, uh, don't, um, you know, but it is on there only as an, an action item, I mean, as far as a discussion item, not as an action item. So it would not be fully appropriate for us to go ahead and vote on something. But our intention, it sounds like, would be, is that we're supportive of, A, the buyout, and B, get the details in time to support it on the budget for next year on the expansion. Do you need anything else further for a direction? How does that sound?
I think for now, that's great. I just wanted to point out one thing, you're addressing your, your concern about the two options that you're talking about. They're really, in terms of the ex, the buyout, there's no change in the physical infrastructure.
That's correct.
It's just buy.
I understand that.
It's just a transfer, so that any changes, if we expand at Sagamore, that requires, say, some bigger lines, that would be part of the expansion project, independent. There may be some time period when these panels have to be shut off during some connection issues, but.
Yeah, I get it.
It's completely separate.
That's what I mean, and that's why I think they're two separate items. Uh, I, I'm not a, I'm not a PE, but I understand it. Uh, thank you very much for your time. On to action items, unless there's anything further from anyone on, no, good, super. Um, we do have one, two, three, four, five, six different action items, and hopefully they're done some bit in a matter of how long each may take. First up is the day sailor request to permanently switch license, uh, of the Sloop Heritage to the Sloop Inherit the Wind. And would Steve, or would you like to just give some context?
Yep, I'll do a little introduction. Um, so Jeff Beck, the owner-operator of, uh, Sloop Heritage, uh, currently licensed day sailor that operates, um, from the public landing, uh, needed some work done to that boat, and so requested to temporarily, um, operate the Sloop Inherit the Wind, um, from, from that spot under that license, um, while the repairs were being made. Jeff can go into more detail about this, but the repairs, um, were more complicated and costly, and so he's worked out an agreement with the owner of the Inherit the Wind, um, and would like to permanently switch those licenses. So Steve can talk about the logistics of that, um, he's supportive, and, uh, it's, it's been successful for the, um, two seasons, is it, that it's, it's been running from that spot?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with this at all. It's the same exact boat, same size, looks the same, carries the same amount of passengers, so it's almost identical.
Now, does this get into an issue where somebody else was waiting in the wings to go ahead and get one of these licenses?
Um, not in the past, because in the past, other, I mean, one of the things that says for the select board that you'll get preference to the people that have, have held licenses. So even if there was people that, that would come, we haven't had any applications, so.
Yeah, that's, that's built into the harbor and waterways ordinance.
Right, but we've, we've all had the experience before, or not, maybe some of us, of approving some kind of windjammer-related thing and then finding out later it was controversial, but we didn't recognize it at the time. But this sounds, this doesn't sound like one of those situations, right?
Correct.
And, and we've done this before, you have a better memory about.
Yeah, yeah, so this happened with, uh, the Lazy Jack 1 and the Lazy Jack 2 back in 2005, and Sean got a new boat, um, same exact boat, carried the same amount of people, and the select board, you know, realized Sean was the operator and the license holder, he's just getting a new vessel, so this is the same thing.
Any concerns, questions, Ken?
No.
Allison?
No, I would move that we approve the transfer of the commercial passenger day sailor license from Sloop Heritage to Sloop Inherit the Wind for the duration of the current Sloop Heritage license agreements.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, and vote? Those in favor? Yes, 3-0.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Chief Gagny, next item up is the approval of a new police cruiser request.
Good evening. You have before you a request to, for the department to purchase a, uh, 2025 Ford SUV, uh, gas hybrid police cruiser. Uh, our current fleet of cruisers includes a 2019 Dodge Charger that has 94,000 miles on it, a 2020, uh, gas, uh, gas hybrid Ford SUV that has 60,502, and a 2023, uh, Ford SUV hybrid that has 37,788 mileage. And I also have a 2019, uh, Ford Fusion Responder, and that's gas hybrid. So, number of years ago, the boards wanted to start moving towards the hybrids to eventually go to all-electric. At this point right now, we're finding the gas electric is probably, the gas hybrid is probably the best option for us. There's not a lot of police pursuit vehicles in the all-electric, but Chevrolet has got a 2025 Blazer. I think the production of that was slowed down some. When I talked to the dealer the other day, it's probably not going to be anything we could get till 2026. We did not budget for a cruiser in the next budget year, but we have 60,000 already in reserves, because we've been putting 30,000 away a year to, uh, purchase a new cruiser. Uh, we spent pretty much our entire repair line this year so far fixing up some of those cruisers that we have. We have a 2016, that's how long we've been pushing these out. When I took over as chief, we used to turn them over every two years. Now we're pushing them out four to five, and that's just because the price of the cruisers is so much, and setting them up and all of that time. So we're getting extra, extra years out of these vehicles, uh, but the prices have doubled. Normally, we'd go out to bid, but due to supply and demand of cruisers, I have found a hybrid over in Augusta. It's the dealer who we usually always do our business with, he has an on-lot model there. Uh, when he sent me over the price for it last week, it was at 52, uh, 570, I believe. He called me today, I was asking, because I thought the price was different than one that he had given me, and he said that he'd forgotten to, uh, add in our discount. So the actual price that the, this cruiser will be is 47,358.
Yeah, keep going.
I think he actually gave me a little better deal than I had anticipated. I, uh, the hy, the gas hybrids are a little more expensive. Detective Sergeant Bailey did a lot of research on the vehicles. We also talked to Chief Farley, who does, uses an all-electric Ford Lightning F-150 truck, and he's finding that the battery life sometimes isn't really that sufficient for him. So that could be problematic for us. Uh, we do have to idle our cruisers a lot, and it's for heat during the winter and cool during the summer because of all the equipment that's running inside, computers, radars, uh, mobile data terminals. With the gas hybrids, it cuts that idling time down to half, because it'll kick off the motor and it'll run on battery to keep those things charged and it cycles. If the officers are going into the office for a period of time, they'll shut everything down. When we shut the cruiser down, uh, everything, you get logged out of all of your systems. So for an immediate response, we don't have access unless you would log back into the camera system, log back into the mobile data. So, uh, that's why we still have to idle quite a bit. And in the wintertime, it's to keep everything charged up, because if you shut the car off, it'll kill the battery, leaving all that stuff on, so.
Well, it's good to know, the, the difference is not so. I know some people might say, not even 4,000 miles, that's, that's not a lot, but from what I understand, um, you know, it's like when you sell a car with 300,000 miles, you say, well, it's mostly highway miles and it's, you know, running all the time. What people don't understand, maybe with a police cruiser, is it's sitting there on the side of the road idling, and although the mileage isn't high, the hours on the engine is high and leaving any vehicle idling.
Yeah, I can tell you, we've, we've had to replace the top end of the motor in our Dodge Charger, and that's, at 50,000, we've replaced the, uh, drivetrain, uh, rockers, lifters and all of that. So, yeah, we are going to keep that, because we've put a bunch of money into it. I've got one of the SUVs that we currently have in the primary fleet has developed a gas leak, so we're, we've got that down for repair as well. The 2016 that we've had, that shows you how long we've kept some of these, uh, the highway department could actually use a vehicle, so we can repurpose it. We're not getting anything to speak of for, uh, trade-in value. We do try to keep one, where we put our cruisers out a little further, we try to keep one extra car, we use that for animal control, to put animals in it if we need to. We also don't know if we'll need a vehicle at some point with the new paid parking, so that's something that could be used for that as well. So, uh, if we go to, eventually, if we went to plate readers, that would be mounted on a car just to make the passes through town, so. Uh, I'm recommending that we go ahead and make this direct purchase. I think, uh, this will avoid any potential tariffs, and if we wait any further after July 1st, these cars are going to go like hotcakes, because everybody has that same anxiety of, uh, parts slowing down, vehicles slowing down and whatnot.
And was this formally in the budget? As you said, you, you waited a couple of years, I thought.
Yeah, we've put 30,000 a year in the last two years, so that's 60,000 in net, and I think I asked for 30, and we cut it to 15 to go in that reserve line for this year. So we're not purchasing a car in the next budget.
Okay. Any questions?
And we will continue to look towards going to something that's, uh, uh, full electric, when we can get the, the range up there, and it's, it's not. But I'd say that, uh, we will be pretty much all gas hybrid, except for the 2019, and that'll be cycled out the next cruiser, so. Trying to give you a happy medium again.
Okay. Any questions, Allison?
How much is in the reserve fund that we're going to be using?
60.
That's how much is in there? And how, and we want to use 50-something or?
We're going to use 47, but we also have to set it up, so there'll be money we'll use towards that as well.
So we'll deplete, is, is it, the reserve fund is for specifically for cruisers, not just, does the police department have any other reserve funds?
Uh, we have.
Yeah, for equipment.
Development and equipment.
Well.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Yeah, I will move to approve the, uh, purchase of the new Ford police cruiser, um, not to exceed $60,000 from the police cruiser capital reserve.
Second?
Um, I will second for the purpose of a little bit more discussion.
Okay.
Um, is there, is there any opportunity to, to share cruisers with Rockport or, should we, you know, is this an opportunity to say, hey, we have a, we, instead of us buying this, we could share one with you and pay you guys some money, or how are we doing with the combining departments and working together and?
I'll be buying another cruiser for Rockport, I mean, it's.
You're going to buy another cruiser for Rockport too? Did you guys hear that? Are you okay with that?
They, they approved it in the budget, so.
Oh.
So, yeah, I mean, we have different shifts during the day, we have officers that are using those cars, I mean, it's kind of hard to plan what your shift's going to be and what you're going to have on there, and, and have to go over and borrow a car, and then somebody else is using that car. So this is what we've had for the size of our fleet, this is what we use.
I really love the idea of us working more closely with Rockport on the police stuff.
I've been doing this for going on.
And I think you said before, we were having so many wastewater problems, it was a little bit hard to work with Rockport, but now we're going to resolve all of those tonight and we can all work together. Um, so I guess.
I've never had any issue with, uh, not doing that. Actually, we're doing that tonight, I've got two Camden officers that are working for Rockport to help cover shift.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
So the Camden officers don't mind going over to Rockport, but the Rockport officers don't like coming to Camden, is that the?
No, it's, it, whoever's available. I mean, we could go on forever talking about how lifestyles have changed and people don't really care about working overtime anymore, but that's a whole different subject.
Oh, well, that, right, I guess just, um, to say, to maybe flag this as a, a future opportunity, I, years ago, we used to do, um, workshops every so often with Rockport when we signed the, whatever agreement it is that allows us to share you with Rockport. Um, you know, I'd just love to further that discussion in some way.
I don't have a lot to do at night, so whenever you want to do it.
Oh, great. Friday afternoon it is.
All right, well, but the, the item we're talking about is the police cruiser. Are there any other questions or comments, concerns about the purchase of a police cruiser?
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't want to do it, but, um, but if it's really important to Randy, I guess I will.
Thank you.
Very good.
Hey, this is the easiest one so far with you.
I guess I'm like, wow, Rockport's here, and can't we like fit this in somehow, make them agree to something?
Well, I got to jump on this, or somebody else is going to get it.
I just want, Rockport can borrow this if they need to, that's fine, but.
Very good. Can we, uh, get a vote on the motion that Ken made?
Need a second.
I, uh, I think I did second for the purpose of discussion, so.
All right, let's vote, all in favor? Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, and I'm sure I have a good working relationship with the police chief in Rockport, so if I need a car, I'm sure they'll let me borrow one.
All right, let's, let, keep, keep it up. I hear he's tough, but, eh, anyway. Uh, the next item on the agenda, item C in our action items, is the approval of 39 Main Street Dangerous Building Order. Quick context, and then we'll get an update on, on where they're at.
So I think it's probably best for, Jeremy, do you want to kind of give an overview? Because, um, if you remember, um, the interim order was until May 13th, and it specified that, um, they'd come back at the May 20th meeting, and that's when you can make a decision on, um, another, another order, and there's a variety of options of what you're going to be able to, to do tonight to address that. And so Jeremy will sort of give you an update on the, um, progress with the interim order, because that's going to inform your next steps with, with whatever decision you make on, um, either another interim order or final order, or whatever, whatever it is that you decide to do.
Great, thank you. Hello? So as you recall, there was some hearings, there were two hearings, right? We continued them, and then, um, um, they had to provide, the party that purchased the property, the Locka Tours, had to provide some information, items A through H, I believe it was, um, on the interim order. Um, that was all that was asked of them in that order. And they have provided, I provided in your select board packet what they have provided to us, or to me. I think, I think you need to take a look at it and make sure they provided everything that they, you, they required, uh, you required. Did work with them, they did provide, obviously, the insurance, I think they exceeded what we thought we were going to get, or you were asking for. Um, they provided the letter from the structural engineering firm, firm Thornton Tomasetti. They provided a letter from their general contractor, they provided, uh, email chain, um, with DOT and myself, I was included on that email, um, they forwarded the plans to DOT, their engineers, I think, I don't think they've responded back yet, their engineers at DOT about what the severing the building from, but it didn't sound like that was a big deal, uh, but they were working with DOT, um, amicably and in a good way. So that's good. They did provide an initial letter from the electrician, um, I, um, responded back promptly that it wasn't exactly what we were looking for, and then they then, um, got the contractor back out there with the electrician, it sounded like. And then the electrician did provide a second letter, which I think got into more detail and I think what you were asking for, and I, I would, I think he provided that, and they, or they provided that. They also engaged propane companies, um, on that and assessed that. Didn't appear to be any issues there, the propane lines are running. Doesn't appear to be any issues there. The propane lines are running underneath the sidewalk on Main Street. And then they did work with the Camden Wastewater Department and Camden Wastewater did camera that line from the manhole out in front. That was all that was assessed, but I think that's really all that was asked of them at the time. I would add that when the project, if it all moves forward, like I think people are expecting or anticipating, plumbing inspections will be done and we will make sure that there are no leaks in the plumbing system. They got to do a
That's normal anyway.
Normal stuff, not a big deal. And then the the one question I had and I I couldn't really, I don't want to answer it. I'm going to leave it to you guys to discuss is about the the funds that they have, that was H. I don't think it's spelled out. I don't think they provided exactly what you were looking for here. But they did provide evidence of financial resources. Apparently, to, you know, to complete the structural repairs of the project, but it wasn't exactly the format that I think you were looking for. Especially the, you know, the irrevocable letter of credit or a construction bond. That's not what they provided, but they did provide you evidence of some financial capacity. And that's where we are now. I do know that they are in the process of, I had met with their structural engineer last week along with Clint Beveridge, the Towns Code Officer, and we had met with them, reviewed what they had submitted. That's where we are now. They are. I I think we should leave it at that right now because I think that's really deals with the order that you guys had signed and approved. Or those items A through H, and then we can talk about, I think, a path forward beyond that, timing, schedule for getting work done. And those kinds of things. I think there's a lot that needs to be figured out from that perspective, but I think probably addressing your, the items A through H is probably the first order of business. And then we can go from there. Does that sound all right?
As to me.
Yep, thank you, Jeremy.
Yep.
Which was the, was, do you say a second letter from the electrician that? I don't.
There was this first one that said it was a very generic letter and I responded back saying I don't think that was exactly what they were looking for and provided Amy with the kind of the.
So is what's in our packet?
Yes, both of those letters are in the packet, actually.
That's what I'm remembering reading one where I thought, eh.
Yeah.
But I don't know if that was, my question is, can the power be disconnected to that? Maybe so we just maybe let them present and then?
Sure, I think that might be perfectly appropriate. I don't see why power cannot be disconnected. I figured it was disconnected a while ago.
Oh, I have no way of knowing that. I'm just.
All right, what? Do if you, do you have something prepared that you would like to address? So if you could just introduce yourself real quick and?
And I think I do think, Chris, you do have to find whether or not they provided what was required of that interim order.
Sure, thank you.
Okay. So there's a lot of things. I'm Amy Lackertur. This is my husband, David. And I think I've been up here before, so basically what I'd like to do, if given the opportunity, is to go through each line item because there was a lot that was required. And after researching this, what I found was a lot of the things that were claimed, like propane running under the building and and that initial complaint actually were not issues. So I just want to clear up some of those because it might make people feel more comfortable with the building itself. So my husband, David Lackertur, and I bought the building on thirty nine Main Street on four eighteen, twenty twenty five, from Janus K. First National Bank was the lender for this transaction. Janus K. of Lincolnville was the seller. At the time of closing, Janus paid a special assessment to the town of Camden in the amount of eleven thousand, six hundred and sixty five dollars and thirty cents. That special assessment covered all expenses incurred by the town in this matter to date. It included the visual inspections done by Joshua Croft and McDonnell of WBRC, Bill Kelly's legal fees incurred up to the date of the closing, and any other miscellaneous fees that were incurred such as postage. In addition, at closing, all taxes were brought current and paid in full. Due to concerns by a member of the select board at the last select board meeting when we provided the purchase and sale, we did take Janus off that secondary mortgage. And so the only lien holder on this property is the First National Bank. David and I put twenty percent down on the property. What I would like to detail today, while the board is here, is the supporting documents that clearly illustrate the progress and work that's been done to address the interim order that was created by the select board. The interim order was put in place to allow the owners of thirty nine Main Street an opportunity to address and rectify the alleged issues listed in the interim order. I hand-delivered the eighty-three page packet with supporting documents to the town of Camden on Friday, May ninth in advance of the May thirteenth deadline. While compiling these responses, I have forwarded updates as they became available to Jeremy Martin. In addition, as required by the interim order, I have included Jeremy in email chains with the DOT, Camden Wastewater propane reports, as well as keeping him apprised of structural engineering updates with plants. Please be aware that my husband and I, in an attempt to show good faith with an urgency, take this matter very seriously. We actually started working on most of these line items because of the tight deadline, well in advance of purchasing the property. Because the structural engineer we had to secure, the actual final stamp plans will be here the week of the nineteenth, Jeremy. I think when you met with the structure, I don't know where he is, but I think when you met with him, didn't they say the final stamp plans would be this week? Yeah, the week of the nineteenth. So I think you guys should have those. Also, we've already submitted all applications to the Department of Transportation, the DEP, and we've been given directive by both on what pathways to choose for quit permitting. I'm hopeful that all of you have the packet in front of you, which I'm assuming you do. I also am wondering, do you have the initial notice of violation that was placed against Larry Weatherholt's, which kind of started this whole chain? Have you guys looked at that?
Well, we looked at it before, but it's.
So I am going to reference some of those just because that's kind of where this interim order came. And so I think it's important that we follow, excuse me, follow the chain so everybody kind of has an idea. The first requirement you guys asked for was to obtain general liability insurance to cover the damages of an amount of no less than one million per occurrence and up to two million in an aggregate with a deductible not to exceed ten thousand. All policies have been bound by the Allen Agency here in Camden. You should have cover sheets of the policies in your packet. There were policies for commercial general liability that met your requirement of a million per occurrence with a general aggregate of two million with a zero deductible. The second policy is an excess liability coverage policy for another million with personal injury limit. The third policy is a builder's risk policy that provides four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in coverage. This policy is for the rehabilitation of the building, renovation coverage during the construction process. And finally, we received a flood insurance policy which covers the building costs. At the end of all the construction with the first, then those policies will be converted to a traditional insurance and will maintain the flood. The second item you had asked for was commitment from a qualified structural engineer firm that's capable of providing a scope of work to replace all the piers, pillars, sills, footers, pillar bases in a manner that meets applicable codes and permitting requirements of the town of Camden. You also asked that we have early engagement with the DEP and the Army Corps due to time periods associated with such approvals. Note, this is from you guys, when the scope of work is subsequently prepared by the engineer, it should shall include a work plan, schedule that details how the work will be completed, how long it's expected to take, how the contractor plans to access the site, and how they plan to manage fluctuating water levels, which I spoke to Dave St. Laurent on the phone the other day about. Submittals in your packet should include the engagement letter with Thornton Thomasetti. David and I had several calls with Ethan Ryle with principal of Thornton Thomasetti prior to engaging his services. We entered an agreement with them on March seventeenth of twenty five, prior to owning the building due to the urgency of the timeline. I think it's important to note that Ethan's bio with Thornton Thomasetti lists him as the principal and leader in Thornton Thomasetti. He has extensive experience across Maine in the evaluation and restoration of historic structures. He specifically specializes in forensic engineering and emergency response for structural failures. It's really important because of the tag on this building. The second thing you should have is a proposal for structural engineering services at thirty nine Main. The agreement was dated January twenty first of twenty five. Thornton Thomasetti's proposed outline in your packets talks about project description, scope of services, construction administration time, schedule of fees and qualifications. And an important side note in that packet as well, you will notice that Thornton Thomasetti's proposal permitting and international building code for new building structures is not included. And the reason Ethan talked about not including that, because the scope of repair for this project will be in keeping with the historical structural framework of this building. It is in the historical framework and therefore will not be subject to the International Building Code for new building structures or substantial improvements. I will address this with the list of action items needed from the town at the conclusion of this run through. The third submission is a request to drain the dam given to Dave St. Laurent with a two hundred and fifty dollar check with a request to open the gate on three thirty one twenty five. We had several calls and emails to Dave St. Laurent. He was responsive, but advised us that due to the spring runoff, it was too dangerous and most likely the water would not drain. After consulting with the structural engineer, they explained that they could not form the stamp plans without having a visualization of the pillars and the bases in all parts of the undercarriage. Due to the tight timeline and the time entailed with devising the stamp plans, the engineer suggested I drain it to see where the water level was. David and I went to the office, Dave St. Laurent's office, with an application and the check. We explained that we had to get a visual examination of the undercarriage of the building. He again said it was not safe and dangerous. We explained that due to the dangerous building tag and the threat for tearing it down, we had to try. In fact, it was suggested by one select board member at the select board meeting to get scuba divers to inspect the base. The gate was opened via permanent drained on three thirty one twenty five. All bases were in fact drained and visible. Ethan Ryle and Zachary Shabot from Thornton Thomasetti Structural Engineers came to the site on April second for the day to inspect and gather data. At that point, after inspecting the bases and looking over everything, they suggested an immediate temporary stabilization letter and drawing. After inspection and review of the structure, the structural engineering firm and our general contractor, Milton Higgins, decided that the first and most pressing order of business was the temporary stabilization of the failed pier pillar on the easternmost end of the building. This was the primary concern until the full repair could be done. The structural engineer felt that the failed pier posed the greatest risk to the integrity of the building and needed to be immediately addressed. I scheduled and met with Jeremy Martin, April fifteenth of twenty five, at three P M. to discuss the overall permitting processes required in this attestation item. In addition, I discussed our immediate intent to shore up the failing post, which was the most immediate concern after the general contractor and structural engineer evaluated. The plan was to provide temporary stabilization of that one failed pier with six by six pressure-treated posts, which would provide stability for the failed pillar. Jeremy's response that day was that I could not repair the post. He said that I had to wait until this May twentieth meeting to talk to the select board to get approval for repair from the board. I strongly strongly objected and requested that he contact Bill Kelly. He stated that he had already talked to him yesterday in anticipation of our meeting. I mentioned my concerns about the overall logic and waiting more than a month during the rainy season on a building that had been cited as dangerous and unsafe to human life and the public welfare. In addition, I referenced the notice of violation served on Larry Weatherholt's on October fourth of twenty twenty four, where Jeremy cites the same post in his violation to Weatherholt's. He states, your building at thirty nine Main Street has structural supports that are failing. For instance, one primary column on the waterside is completely degraded and no longer providing support. This dangerous condition likely meets the definition of substantial structural damage in the two thousand fifteen International Building Code. The same notice of violation states that this situation meets the definition of unsafe in the two thousand fifteen I E B C, Chapter Two, in which structural members meet the definition of dangerous or otherwise dangerous to human life or the public welfare. Also, in that same complaint served on Larry Weatherholt's by the town of Camden on October fourth, Jeremy states, due to the ongoing and apparent changes in the condition of your building, we can no longer wait for you or your engineers to develop an interim plan. Actions must be taken immediately to stabilize the building, to make it safe and to ensure that the building and the equipment are no longer unsafe and dangerous as determined by the code enforcement officer. Jeremy then reconsidered and said, bring me stamp plans from your engineer showing the repair and the temporary stabilization. He said he would then approve temporary stabilization of the pier if the stamp plan was devised. I called Ethan Ryle, Thornton Thomasetti, that day and requested that he draw up a stamp plan to address the specific failing pier that he and Milton, the general contractor, had identified. Two weeks later, May first, twenty twenty five, I received the stamped structural plan for the failed pier as well as the letter detailing the repair by my builder and the engineering firm. These documents are also in your packet. The following day, I went down to the town office, May second, twenty twenty five, with drawings, and I had previously grabbed a building permit from the town office for temporary repair. Jeremy was not in the office. Clint was there. I briefed him on Jeremy's directive regarding the temporary stabilization and handed him the stamp plans. I asked him the fee for the building permit and wrote a check for the amount. I also received and filled out parking space permits for the front access of the building during the repair, as was previously required by Jeremy. He reported that I would need permits for all spaces occupied and stated it's going to be expensive for access to the front of the building during any work. Clint looked at my plans and my construction application, asked me a few questions and then said, as far as I'm concerned, you're good to go. He also gave me my application check back and said he wasn't sure of the amount and that he would get back to me with a total of the permit once he determined if he should be, if it should be under a commercial permit. The general contractor, Milton Higgins, was called and we tentatively scheduled the temporary stabilization for the following week, weather pending, and scheduled dam drainage pending as well. It rained continuously the following week. The builder said we had to wait a week until the weather broke and it dried a bit. After looking at the upcoming weather patterns, the repair was scheduled for Thursday, May fifteenth. On Tuesday, May thirteenth, twenty twenty five, the engineers from Thornton Thomasetti requested a page turn of the seventy-five percent complete final repair drawings with Jeremy. I was unable to attend. I was traveling for work, but my husband, David, Jeremy, Clint, and the two structural engineers at Thornton Thomasetti met via Zoom. The purpose of this page turn was to brief Jeremy and Clint on the preliminary set of final repair plans, which will be fully complete and stamped the week of May nineteenth. It was also intended to ensure that the scope and plans were in line with the town prior to final delivery. These plans were also sent after the meeting to Jeremy and Clint on May twelfth, twenty twenty five, with amendments. During this meeting, David, my husband, informed Jeremy about the upcoming temporary repair schedule for that week. We had heard nothing to the contrary since the plans and permit request was approved by Clint. Jeremy stated that unfortunately, we couldn't again do the temporary stabilization because he happened to be talking to the DEP recently about another project and mentioned our project and it would now need a full DEP permit. He said that the DEP would now require a permit even for emergency repair. David asked him who he needed to speak to because as the engineers confirmed, this was an emergency stabilization and it was not changing the size or scope, which the engineers also confirmed. Jeremy responded that we we could call, but he didn't know who I would get because it takes a long time. David said, well, give me the name of who you you talked to. He responded Laura Boulair, who who has not yet responded to my email. David and I had already hired another engineering firm, a civil engineering firm, Sebago Technics, to focus on the permitting and in collaboration with Thornton Thomasetti. Part of the requirements established in your attestation is that early engagement of the DEP and the Army Corps is essential due to time periods associated with such approvals. Therefore, the civil engineering firm, Sebago Technics, has been retained and has been working in close collaboration since we purchased the building. Rebecca Gabrizowski of Sebago Technics has already been in communication with the DEP and already received directive on the permitting process and repairs. See attached emails. Allison Sirwa, the regional manager of the DEP, wrote to Rebecca on April twenty fourth, twenty twenty five, the following. After reviewing your thirty nine Main Street building, I believe it most likely will qualify for N R P A for eighty Q two exemption for maintenance and repair. If not, then it could also qualify for section four P B R, replacement of structure, if they only intend. if they only intend to temporarily stabilize the existing building while they replace the piles and kind. Based on this direction, we had already filed with the D E P for an exemption and we had provided them with the ample documentation and all necessary forms to be complete. Thornton Thomasetti concurred with the D E P and Sebago Technics on this plan. I am requesting that all further communication with the D E P and Army Corps of Engineers work with our engineers from the town so it doesn't confuse the issue of getting prompt permitting." In the select board meeting on two eighteen twenty-four, Jeremy stated that he was frustrated on the lack of progress for the stabilization and was very outspoken on the idea that more time be given for repairs. He stated, "Section eleven one-one-five-point-one of the International Building Code states to become unsafe shall be taken down, removed, or made safe as the code official deems necessary." That's a code citation I have available to me, he said, and as you said, I am addressing this. The select board needs to make a stand on this. Jeremy referenced this code when asked by Ken Gross the timeline on the stabilization of the building. He stated, "Again, if it's dangerous, it's dangerous. If there is a threat to collapse, and we believe there is, that can happen at any time. So if you keep punting this and putting it out there with another three months of getting an engineer, now we are eight to nine months. I know that there were people in the last month that had people and engineers ready to go. I don't know what happened," he was referring to us. "The reality is to call up an engineer at sixty to ninety days, you can't get them out there in a hurry. It makes me nervous and I'm concerned about this unsafe equipment. I don't think anyone, anyone wants sewer to dump into the harbor. I don't think anyone wants a propane leak that can be catastrophic on Main Street." The code official in his own testimony said that it is within his capacity to make the building safe. Therefore, Clint was within his jurisdiction that day to allow the temporary repair, and so is Jeremy. We have spent valuable time and money to get expedited stamped engineering plans for a temporary stabilization and for the safety of the town and the building. Instead, we still have no temporary stabilization approval from this town. I can't be held accountable for something that I am ready and willing to do and I am being stalled." The next thing you will see in the packet is all the communication from the D E P, the Army Corps, the Historic Commission, the tribal notifications, and the tribe. David, we have gotten approval from the Historic Commission in the state of Maine for that any work on this building will not impact its historical structure. You will see, I've notified all five tribal councils and the Maine Historic Preservation Commission. Last Friday, that's why it's not in your packet, we received written approval. Basically, what the Maine Historic Preservation Commission said in the letter is it states, "I have reviewed the information received April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five to initiate consultation on the above referenced project and in accordance with section one oh six of the National Historic Preservation Act of nineteen sixty-six. Based on the information you submitted, I have concluded that the proposed undertaking will have no adverse effect on the historical properties, architectural or archaeological, as defined by section one oh six. Signed Kirk Mahoney State Historic Preservation Officer." Okay, that's all of the engineering requirements that you should have. The third thing is providing a letter of commitment from a qualified contractor capable of performing the scope of work specified in the remediation plan by the engineer. The first thing you're going to see is the letter of commitment from Milton Higgins. Second thing was the estimate for jacking and supporting the building. The cost to pour fifteen concrete piers, it's actually thirteen. Labor and material to jack up the building and replace pier posts, bracing on existing building, labor and material to replace existing deck without changing the framework, labor and materials siding to replace the back trim and the electric on the exterior of the building only to address the items you mentioned. All materials for this quote were reviewed with the structural engineers and the owner, including the types of concrete that would be needed for the location of this repair and any other materials. Also, the third thing you'll see was the plan that was also required from Jeremy by the general contractor for the temporary stabilization. So we got the stamp plans and the plan from the general contractor. Moving on to item four, immediately engage with the D O T to meet onsite and review the premises and physical structural connections of the premises, framing members that are attached to the adjacent D O T bridge, address timing and scope of impact, issues that will affect the premises during the anticipated D O T removal and repair of the adjacent bridge, and provide copies of all correspondence with the D O T, including a detailed explanation in writing to K's or Lacatu's understanding of the impact the D O T's anticipated repairs may have on the premises. K and Lacatu shall keep the C E P apprised of these efforts as they occur and shall also notify and invite the C E O to attend all meetings onsite via streaming or Zoom and any scheduled telephone conference. Attached in the packet is all email communications with members of the D O T to meet and review the bracket on thirty-nine Main Street. My first contact was with Denver Small on March twentieth, but then all other communications were conducted through Gerald Dosty, senior project manager of the Bridge Division. On March twentieth, I contacted Gerald Dosty and Denver Small to begin the dialogue concerning bridge attachment. After back and forth and submitting plans, the takeaways are as follows. Gerald Dosty informed me, FYI, the current schedule for the bridge project indicates construction will not commence until twenty-twenty-seven at the earliest. Gerald Dosty has also requested that we provide any documentation, report, photos, et cetera, from the structural engineer indicating they've analyzed the connection and what is the recommended plan for detachment and replacement. And then he said, "Once he received that, which he has received, he's going to turn it over to his bridge maintenance folks for review and approval." I have sent both the temporary fix to him because that addressed the bracket and also the preliminary final plans that we received, there's seventy-five percent. Just so you guys know, because it's been reported all over the place that the bracket's holding up the building. The bracket, according to the structural engineer, is completely rusted, it serves no structural purpose, and he included that in his plans, so the bracket will just be detached, we just need the okay because it's the D O T's property. One thing I wanted to mention on here, and that was part of the statement, Jeremy said in the February eighteenth, twenty-twenty-four select board meeting, "My gut says I'm not a structural engineer, but if you take this building away, the other buildings are not relying on this building. It appears by all images, we have seen it and looking at this building over the last couple of years, that this building is relying on the other buildings, not the other buildings relying on this building." And then Allison, you mentioned, "And the bridge too." And Jeremy said, "Yes, and the bridge too." No, the bridge is not holding up the building.
What about the other building? Did you find anything out about the role of that?
They won't assess that, and as a matter of fact, I haven't even handled that. That's something that we've had to do individually, building by building. So all I can account for is what the structural engineer said on the bracket that's attached to our building. Okay, so the next attestation requires immediate engagement of an electrician to review and provide a report on the present state of electrical services, wires, outlets, conduits serving and located under the premises, including an explanation of how that service is obtained from adjacent rail property or provides power to other adjacent rail property. Provide a report as to what repairs, maintenance, or replacement work is necessary to meet all applicable codes and provide a plan as to the system of breakers and fail-safe measures that will serve to eliminate fire hazards or uncontained electrical charge in the event that the premises shifts, drops, and elevation or collapses. A report of all these findings and the plan of repair shall be provided with cost estimates to the extent by May thirteenth. So just so you know, the current meter number on thirty-nine Main Street, and I've had to research all of this, is one oh five zero nine nine four one eight nine. It has been disconnected for more than a year. Maybe that's why they had extension cords under there, I don't know. Maybe they were taking it from another building, I have no idea. But I finally got around to that. Currently, there is no electricity running to the building per C M P. Provided in the packet, you'll see a lettering of engagement from Dave Small, he's a certified electrician, a local master electrician, his license number is M S six hundred one three seven three six. Just so you know, he's going to be working through Milton Higgins. He is contracted under the general contractor, so you'll see his quote under Milton's bill. But he also provided Milton and him both, when we drained the dam on the first, they went under. And I must say that Ben Smith has been invaluable with showing us where all those wires go. That whole downtown community has such a beautiful spirit of helping each other and they have a basement, which I didn't even know. We were trying to fit through that little cubby hole in between to get down into the crawl space, and Milton's a big man. And he was like, "Ah, I don't think I'm going to get through here." And so then all of a sudden, Ben comes around and he said, "Oh, follow me." We go down in the basement and he opens up the doors and you're able to walk right out there, so that was a blessing. But yeah, David's the electrician, he did do a thorough assessment after initially Jeremy said the first one wasn't adequate. He inspected all meters, conduits, accessed the underneath from the basement. Ben Smith, okay, I already talked about that. The cost to estimate is inclusive of removing the wires, the receptacles under the building, supporting the service conduit with new hangers. So my service conduit is fine as far as the sheathing, but it is hanging down, so it needs new hangers, and he's going to do that. There is an easement, Tom and I have talked, Tom was out there. Tom's wire has a little bit of sheathing, but Tom and I are going to work together when the dam's drained and Tom's going to fix the sheathing around him, it's a small fix according to David, just to make sure that. But that's the extent of what you have to do with that one conduit. My conduit is going to require also, what did he say? He's replacing all of the breakers and he also inspected the interior, but I'm not even going to get into that until we worry about the underneath. Explanation of services is there also. I will say that Dave Small said, when we were looking for more information, he tried to get in touch with Jeremy several times, but he hadn't heard back. So what you see in there, if there's something more that you need, he said he would be happy to address it with you. Okay, on to number six. This has been a real, this is about the propane. So immediately engage a qualified propane gas company or expert to review and provide a report on the present state of propane equipment that is located under the premises and to describe where that gas service commences and terminates. Describe the rail property served and provide a plan as to a system of breakers and fail-safe measures that will serve to eliminate fire hazards, explosion, and release of gas. The reason I almost didn't buy this property because I was so scared when I listened to that February meeting about blowing up downtown Camden. I kept hearing this narrative, and so before we bought the property, I actually did a propane inspection. In the site packet, you're going to see a visit from Jake Holmes, service manager from P G Willie. You're going to see the pipeline test report, a plot plan of that propane line. Also, I did a DigSafe report because I was instructed to do that by Jake because DigSafe is able to locate all those wires, everything, and it kind of gives us an idea of what we have to watch for and exact coordinates. The first item I would like to address is the site visit report of Jake Holmes, service manager of P G Willie. David and I met him onsite and he was given a copy of his attestation that the select board acquired. Jake's responses were as follows, "Good morning, Amy. As was mentioned at our site visit on Friday, three twenty-eight, we maintain the gas line that runs in the sidewalk in front of that location, not under the building with the Maine Public Utilities Commission jurisdiction liquefy petroleum gas distribution system. The state-registered account for this line is I D. number seventeen twenty-four. This account is required to be registered with the state as it passes under a public walkway and as the propane gas storage is located on a different property than the propane service. We are required to patrol the service quarterly as well as perform leak checks annually. Our paperwork is inspected by the state as is part of our operation and maintenance plan that is required for all of our J L P accounts. I've attached the plot plan for the gas line in the sidewalk in front of the property you're looking at purchasing as well as an updated pipeline test report from twenty-three when we overhauled our J L P program. Our records show that this gas line was placed in the sidewalk in two thousand and five with the assistance from the Town of Camden when they installed the new sidewalks. I can't say for certain there are any other gas lines under your building, but I can confirm that the gas line that feeds Buttermilk at Mariners runs in the sidewalk on Main Street and enters directly into the basement of the Mariners Restaurant. I can't forward you all of the information or paperwork, I literally have binders, but I can make it available to the town if you need to see more." The next thing in your packet is the pipeline test report showing the pipeline and test data and the pressure of the pipe, all in working order. Following that is the actual system map showing tanks, mains, service lines, distances with start and end locations. You will clearly see that the line based on these geographical locations runs under the sidewalk in front of the building on Main Street, not under the building. Jake from P G Willie also recommended that I call Mariners and he provided me with a service manager. He suggested that I file a DigSafe report on the premises to thoroughly rule out any chance that there is an active line. Jake said DigSafe will show all active propane lines, electric lines, and any lines that are registered. The results of that are also included in your packet. I spoke directly with the service manager of Mariners Energy because they maintain lines further down Bayview Street, which are also monitored via the J L P system. Mariners does not have any lines near the thirty-nine Main Street property. You will see that DigSafe also cleared Dead River, Charter Communications, Irving Energy, and there's also a Mariners report in there. I am very concerned that the notice of violation sent to Larry Weatherholt's that started this whole process by the code enforcement office contained several errors, and then this narrative has been carried forward in the town hired visual engineering report done by W B R C and testified to as fact in the February eighteenth select board meeting. Chris Nolan specifically asked the W B R C engineer questions about the propane line. He asked, "The same thing for the propane line that is under there. It doesn't appear to be connected to anything in the picture. Is it out of view in that picture or is the propane line serving any property? Is it active?" The structural engineer responded to Chris Nolan's question by stating, "That's fair. We were not able to determine where it came from or where it went." At this point, Jeremy, the code enforcement officer intervened in the conversation and asked if he could jump in to address the propane line. He stated, "I did follow up on this one previously. I had alleged that it runs to Camden Deli. Tom Rothwall had informed me that he doesn't use propane. It actually runs to Buttermilk Kitchen. The propane tanks are actually on the other side of forty-one Main, up in the town and Library Park area. There is an old, years ago licensing agreement, maybe not even one for propane tanks that are up there. That's where the propane goes, under the building of forty-three, forty-one, thirty-nine, thirty-seven, and then getting to thirty-five is where the propane serves." Bill, the town attorney, in this same conversation asked the engineer, "In photo twenty-four, it looks like the propane dead ends. Is there an active line above it?" The engineer responded, "The galvanized line above the photo is where the propane goes." This is a very dangerous narrative because all through these complaints, we've talked about if failure of this building occurs, it could cause catastrophic damage and fire all over Main Street. I've seen it in newspaper articles, I've seen it everywhere. And so my concern is that, what I've learned from all of this, because I'm a layperson, these are all monitored by J L P accounts. So for us to claim that an active propane line is running, we should know where our propane lines are going, especially if it was put in the sidewalk of Camden. And if it was, why did an engineer who was hired to cite this dangerous building and tear it down claim that there was a propane line there? Why? Because he just did a cursory visual inspection. He even said he didn't walk in the building. It was a rudimentary inspection, and if you look at Jeremy's citation that he wrote to the violation that he wrote back in October, everything that he wrote in the violation is included in the B R Z report. So, and also on that B R Z report, Jeremy and Clint walked the W B R Z engineer around. So I'm concerned about the validity, he just misinformed the whole select board about very crucial features that he was hired to determine.
And why do you think it was that the owners
Let her finish, please.
weren't able to dispute any of that in the multiple hearings that we had?
Because they were overwhelmed.
Yeah, so that's what we're doing. So that's what we're doing, this is your opportunity to present information that the building might not be as dangerous as was described, and that's what we ask for, and I would, so nothing, this is the process. And it's reasonable for us to be concerned about those things, and then it's reasonable for us to listen to information to refute it, so let's.
Yep, but what I am going to say is I am concerned that the person that's the planning and director and code enforcement does not understand where the propane is, and he testified that And he testified that he had researched it and found it to be in a place that it wasn't.
Well, let's keep it with what, with your findings, that what you found through the engineer.
Okay. So the next thing is the Camden wastewater. Um, in Camden wastewater department, uh, we were tasked with reviewing uh, the condition and code compliance of the existing wastewater system components that are exposed and visible and that serve the premises. On April second, twenty twenty five, I contacted Jeremy as requested by attestation and wrote, good afternoon, Jeremy. As discussed at the select board meeting, contacting the Camden wastewater department to set up a review of the wastewater is a town function. I am writing to see who is doing this item in the attestation requirement. We will allow access to the building and are ready to work with the Camden wastewater department to ensure code compliance of the existing wastewater components. Could you confirm that you had received this and let me know if I need anything else to ensure compliance of this item? On April third, uh, Jeremy put me in touch with Justin Gov and Dave St. Laurent via email and stated that Justin had been brought up to speed on the need for their inspection and it would need to be inspected via camera TV line. Shortly after I reached out to Justin and wrote, hi, Justin, is there a time next week when you can put this on your schedule to be assessed? Let me know when one of us would like to be there. Also, one of the select board members keeps bringing up sewage leaking. It is my understanding that the sewer line was replaced and redone by the town to connect to the individual properties when the sidewalk was redone. I would also like you to give specifics regarding the timeline and maintenance of that. Thank you so much. Justin responded on April ninth, hello, Amy. We pulled the records on the sewer lateral for the thirty nine Elm Street building. I'm assuming what he meant was main because it says main on the enclosed report card. He confirmed that when it was replaced in ninety seven, it was connected into the manhole located in front of the property. He wrote, our plan is to TV inspect the line from said manhole. As such, we will not need access to the inside of the building for the inspection. We are looking to complete this inspection this week or early next week. On Monday, April twenty first, twenty five, after closing on the property, finally, the previous Friday, I reached back out to Justin, Jeremy and Dave St. Laurent to see if this inspection had been done. Justin responded that it had, the results of that inspection are as follows. We were able to TV inspect the thirty nine Main Street lateral last week. We inspected from the manhole located approximately eighteen feet from the face of the building. The attached photos, uh, show the inside of the manhole where thirty nine Main Street service connects to the public system. Thirty nine Main Street is the pipe with our yellow camera cord running into it. The adjacent active service wire is further Camden Deli, adjacent. From the manhole, the first eight feet of pipe appears to be cast iron, which transitions to PVC at about the curb line. That is consistent with the nineteen ninety seven connection card attached, which indicates that ten feet, ten feet of PVC pipe was replaced with PVC that would be the section under your sidewalk. PVC pipe continues under the building where two pipes wide into the visible photo in two and three. We assume that those pipes are from internal plumbing drops. From what we were able to inspect, the sewer service for thirty nine Main Street is free of leaks, defects or blockages. In Camden, the property owner is responsible for their sewer lateral all the way to the connection with the main. In the case of thirty nine Main Street, that would be the manhole located in the street. The town is responsible for the sewer main and the manhole itself. Okay, so the sewer lateral was also replaced and put in the sidewalk. It is not sharing as the, um, as the engineer said. The notice of violation that was sent to Larry Weatherholtz again in October to initiate proceedings to declare this building dangerous again contained inaccurate information. And the complaint Jeremy wrote, there are electric sewer, water and propane gas lines that are attached to and run under this building that if structural failure occurs, could have severe and potentially catastrophic impacts on adjacent properties. Municipal and state infrastructure and the public could be impacted. Jeremy said to the board on February eighteenth, twenty five, it makes me nervous and concerned about this unsafe equipment. I don't think anyone wants sewer to dump into the harbor. I don't think anyone wants a propane leak that can be catastrophic on Main Street. Another item that I would like to clear up, um, is the misconception about the sewage ordinance, Allison. You mentioned, um, at that time that we were not in compliance with the sewage ordinance. Um, we were in compliance. You asked the engineer, were you able to determine if the service lines for this building, as well as the sewer, were separate from other buildings? Are they able to be shut off? The engineer responded, yes, it could be cut off. You then said, what about the sewer? Were you able to tell if it has an independent sewer lateral? The engineer responds, photo twenty four and twenty five is that big white service line is the actual sewer that comes from thirty seven and also services thirty nine both. So they share the same service. We do not share the same service, they have independent laterals. So again, he, he was wrong. This is inaccurate as the photos and report from the wastewater indicate. That could have been very easily found out. They do not share the same service. As the wastewater card of installation documents, the lateral was replaced in ninety seven. And as the report from the town of Camden wastewater documents, thirty nine Main Street is the pipe with our yellow camera cord running into it, the adjacent active services for the Camden Deli. Um, also, we need to correct the record, um, uh, when the engineer said so to you, uh, Allison, so a leak that occurs, such as the one in your other photos, you noted that there was not a lot of room, uh, for movement. So if the building were to shift, it doesn't take a lot of, a lot for those pipes to crack. It doesn't take a lot. It could potentially cause leaking coming from other places as well. You were referring to the shared service leaking, which is not the case, they're not shared. The inaccuracies continue with the engineer. He then said in the February eighteenth meeting, so yes, Allison, exactly. The nature of those PVC connections, they're very rigid. If the building were to move or continue to move or collapse, it would most definitely pull out the service to thirty seven, break it off and cause sewage leaking in their building. Then Allison, you made the statement, there actually had been sewage issue there, sewage issues there before. So, okay, thank you. And then in the same meeting, you said, I've already witnessed sewage dripping from this building in two thousand and eighteen. It had to be brought to their attention, bad things have already happened.
Correct.
When did you see sewage dripping from the building?
I, I apologize, it was a plum, it turns out to have been a plumbing issue. So I guess it wasn't in a similar way that if my toilet were to leak, it would leak down into our kitchen as it has before and we noticed it and we deal with it right away. The plumbing on that building, which was not owned by you at the time, was leaking from the plumbing and not the lateral. If you really want to get into the sewer ordinance, Amy, that, that says that each lateral is supposed to be buried four feet underground and a number of other things. So this is a very interesting approach for trying to move forward in a collaborative way.
I, no, what I'm trying to clear up is all of these damaging things that have been said that really aren't even accurate.
If you could.
Is the building not dangerous? Is that, that's what I would really like to hear about was, is evidence that the building isn't dangerous?
Excuse me, just real quick, what, what I, what we really need, Amy, to focus on is addressing the items
Which I am.
that you have for the packet that address the items that were asked for. That's really where the focus needs to be.
And the plan going forward.
Is that those items, uh, and Jeremy already mentioned early on that he felt those items had already been addressed. The only thing that there was any question on, I thought that you mentioned, is the, uh, item, item H on demonstrating, um, available funds in the specific way that we had asked. So really, that's probably the only other focus point that we really need to do. I appreciate all the research you've done and, and try to get things straight. That, that it certainly demonstrates that you've done research with the time, even the small amount of time they have. If it's possible, just go to item H.
It's also going to be the plan moving forward.
That is the next piece, but that's right now, the first item, as Jeremy had said earlier, is that did the lockit chores, the owners of the building, go ahead and address the items that needed to be addressed by May twentieth? That's really the focus.
And keep the community safe.
That, it's, it's
Exactly.
Do the items on the list.
So on eight, um, you wanted, uh, the final requirement in the attestation is to demonstrate purchase of the premises has the financial capacity to fund the repair work necessary to remediate the dangerous conditions to stabilize the foundational system of piers, pillars, footers and bases and that require replacement with select board fines will be in the amount not less than two hundred thousand based on the general guidance from the twenty twenty proc investigation report. Um, so the reason, uh, what we have included and you'll see in your packet is, uh, the first, uh, the quote from Milton Higgins that included the replacement of piers, pillars, footers, bases. And the quote was formulated after meeting with the structural engineer, visual inspection and measurement when the dam was drained, receiving costs related to, uh, the specific concrete that had to be used. So including all of those piers, it was ninety one thousand, thirty dollars is what his cost of repairing the pillars were. In your packet, you will see the building was financed by the first. They have provided a verification of additional funds up to a hundred and sixty eight thousand, which will be held back on a construction loan that closed with the First National Bank. After, I had to provide them with all of the quotes. So that's what the bank, um, after receiving all the quotes for costs, that's what they, um, came up with. But Jeremy sent me something saying he wasn't sure if I met the two hundred thousand commitment. I first am going to contend that the two, the two hundred thousand was gotten from the proc report, which the select board did not accept, um, when the previous owners tried to submit that. It was a general figure that was given, um, five years ago. It was outdated. It was something that they hadn't done a full inspection of the building.
So are, are you saying that you've demonstrated the funding to be able to handle the quotes that you currently have?
Yes, and they have been measured.
Is there anything else?
But I also provided additional funds on, that I have liquid and equity lines that haven't been retained from Camden National and also a cash account of fifty thousand, which brings it over the two hundred thousand.
Okay, great.
To ensure that.
Can we pause for a moment? Thank you, Amy. Obviously, we've gone through the items that were on, uh, the initial order. Bill?
Hello?
Is it right for us to ask, as far as the items that they presented, from a legal perspective, do you have any concerns that the items that they've done are, um, in line with what was requested?
I
I'm asking Bill if he can, has a right to opine about that or not? Can you, can you opine about that or not?
I will attempt at this.
Can, can Bill, is he allowed to? I don't know.
If you ask me to, I am.
Okay, I'm asking then.
I don't have any concerns with, um, what has been submitted in terms of meeting your requirements. The technical requirement was to use a third party, which was a bank
Yep.
to say that if there was going to be a letter of credit issued, uh, there will be sufficient funds that the bank would hold, which is how letters of credit work. Letter of credit issued to the town that says, well, if they, um, uh, fail to do what they're supposed to do, the bank, the town can call that letter of credit and get paid by the bank and then fix the, the building itself. Um, so the distinction here is that instead of that hundred and sixty eight thousand dollars from the bank saying, hey, we have this, it could be used as a pledge. Uh, you have that instead of the two hundred thousand dollars. So from my perspective, that's the one item that did not meet what your order required, but you've heard the explanation as to why it is what it is and that's for you guys to decide.
Because it meets the quote, in other words.
And that's for you guys to decide whether or not this, this, um, uh, letter from the first, um, is something you're willing to basically amend your order to accept.
Okay.
If not, then they haven't provided the proper letter, but it doesn't seem like that can't be fixed, uh, based on the other liquid funds. So that's the only technical comment I have is about that.
Thank you. Um, is there?
This is from the Camden National Bank.
Okay, thank you.
That's what you're looking for, Charles, a lender, happens as well, from Camden.
Okay, thank you. Tom, I see you're here. Are you here to, to discuss, uh, any concerns or anything about the, your neighboring building?
Tom Rothwell, owner of the Camden Deli. Um, I am so excited to have Dave and Amy as neighbors. Um, I talk to them frequently and they're doing a service for this community. Um, it's an historical building. Um, we just need to allow them to do work on this building. My concern is them not being able to work on the building. I mean, they have all the resources to get going on this. Um, and we need to stop tying them up and support them. Um, because they're doing a service from Main Street and I wish them luck and thank you.
Okay, thank you, Tom.
Yeah.
Is there anyone else here from the public that wanted to discuss thirty nine Main Street?
The last time that we did this, we weren't allowed to accept any commentary from the public, so. And, and I was told I wasn't allowed to talk to anybody, that we weren't allowed to do our own research, that people from the public that wanted to say something couldn't because this was a hearing.
Public comments won't be part of the record in terms of the fact finding, but if the chair wishes to ask the public, I think the chair has the discretion to do that.
That would have been great information to know the last time that that was a decision of the chair. What is our, um, next step here in terms of the, the order? Was an opportunity to provide them with additional time so that they could come up with a plan and we could determine what the next plan is? The building remains, so, so what are the implications of whether or not we find that they have complied with the requests? How does that impact things moving forward? Because the interim order did not, um, say what would happen at the end of that. It, it was basically like the process can continue if they do this, but it didn't specify what the process would be after this.
Well, it sort of did on pages seven and eight, but, um, I think what you've done is just some housekeeping at this point to see if they've met your requirements in terms of what they were to submit. The reason these submissions, as I followed the board, was, uh, they wanted to have more information. You felt you didn't have enough information to make an informed decision.
Correct.
These submission requirements were necessary to move on. And if you look at, um, pages seven and eight, uh, the, the gist of it is that, um, K's and Lacoutour's compliance with the deliverables uh, must be provided by May thirteenth is described below will be important considerations as the select board judges of K or Lacoutour demonstrates the capability and readiness to proceed with a subsequent phase of orders from the select board regarding, one, obtaining stamped engineering plans to remedy the dangerous condition of the features and two, assign contract with a qualified construction company to timely perform the work specified in the engineered plan. The order did not anticipate that you would actually have engineered plans by now.
Right.
Those are sort of ahead of schedule, um, as well as the contract with the engineer, with the, uh, general contractor. So, uh, practically speaking, uh, perhaps you want to inquire as to what the timeframes will be to, um, have the general contractor complete the project. There's probably some sense of what that is. I think that would inform you from their perspective. You may or may not find that satisfactory. So you have that option. You have all the way, uh, of all the options under the statute, which include rather dramatic authority if you were not satisfied with this as a way to work with the owner, uh, to demolish the building. Um, you had the hearing previously, you had the evidence in, before you that was presented. You are really in a deliberation phase. And what you've done in this phase of deliberation is ask clarifying information from both Jeremy and, um, Amy, uh, to bring you up to speed of sort of what's been submitted. But you really are in a deliberative phase and you don't need to take any more testimony unless you wish, you can ask for it. But it's your job now to decide what your next step is, which seemingly is towards these contracts and making sure that they're sufficient with what you want in terms of your timeframes and the work that they are outlining in both the engineering and the, um, uh, general contractor scope of work.
So is our, the proper piece then, should we first agree that the items, the initial items are met by the appropriate deadline?
You certainly can.
And then, then we can go into what's next?
That, that's fine.
Is that appropriate?
Sure.
Yes, so we have all had the package for a couple of days, um, and gone through it ourselves and A through H and assuming that we're satisfied with that. We've also had a report from, from Jeremy that yes, A through H with maybe some caveats about H, but, but he has received the reports. We also had a, uh, report from Amy in some detail about A through H. Um, I think it's, it would be, help us move forward now to certify that these stipulations, these requirements have been met by the Lacoutour. requirements have been met by the Lacoutours.
I, that's, that's not something that I'm able to support because the, I think the most important part of this for me is the financial guarantee being sufficient to remedy the situation. And what I heard here is actually, I'm, I'm more concerned than I was before because from, from what it sounds like, we can't even wait for a full repair in order to be able to move forward, that there's this emergency repair that needs to happen. And so I guess, I, I don't really feel comfortable voting on those parts of it, certainly not changing the financial requirement part of it. I guess what I would really like to hear more about, and maybe that will help put my mind at ease, is the sort of phasing of this. It wasn't clear to me the temporary repair versus the full repair. I noticed the report from the engineer said that they had visited, or it actually didn't, it didn't talk about the site visit. It said that we understand that the town of Camden is requiring that the corner, the, whatever it is, the northwest corner of the building be stabilized, and so then it provides a plan for doing that.
No, no.
So I would, I guess I'd like to hear, what I was really hoping to hear is what the engineer found when he visited the site.
Did you get the up-to-date ones that they sent to Jeremy?
Can you summarize it?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Can I have that binder? So there's two separate plans. Initially, months ago, the, literally the temporary stabilization, we wanted to do during the spring fall because all that rain was coming down and we were worried, as everybody was. I agree with you. The one easternmost post was identified as being failing. So that was what the temporary.
Identified by who? I mean, I understand that that was referenced.
By WBRC, by Jeremy and the initial violation. If you look at the initial.
But, but, so, so there were, that was raised as part of a broad list of observable concerns, but then you went, and, and some of those things you found to be, these were valid concerns, these were not valid concerns. And so what I would like to, to know is which of the structural concerns did your engineer find to be valid, first of all? Are there any of them that were not valid? The characterization of the building could fall down, all of that stuff, and then sort of the urgency of the matter? Because that, I will tell you, I have gotten multiple calls from contractors, from the public after what they observed, people that have, have worked in and around that building, who are very concerned and felt that the town was way too lenient. And I, you know, explained that all, all we were doing is just giving you guys some more time to bring us more information, but we have.
Jeremy, did you want to discuss about the post that you initially?
Maybe let Alice finish?
So I, I want to know what your engineer thinks about the safety of the building, because you went through a long list of things that we got wrong. And so I, the, the essential question here is to know just how dangerous is that building? What is the likelihood that it can fall down? Why does he feel that, or does he feel that the, that, that corner is so unstable that it needs to be done immediately? Because, because all I saw and what I read was that the town of Camden had demanded this. So I need to know from your person, from a qualified engineer, what really is dangerous in his opinion?
Okay, so again, these are not the final stamp plans, so all we're going through is what we talked about.
Right, so why does this temporary repair need to be done?
Because, first of all, Jeremy stated the temporary repair needed to be done on the citation immediately.
That was just a, no, that was.
Wait, wait, yeah.
Yes, can you explain that?
I mean, there's been a lot of, I'm just going to try to.
I understand there's been a lot of back and forth.
There has.
I mean, it's taken an astounding amount of time.
There's been a lot of forth and not back and forth. I never said that that bill, that peer needed to be addressed immediately. Now, what Ms. Lacoutour has stated was she keeps referencing my letter to the prior owner.
Right.
Right, not Janice, but the, the prior owners, who I was after for a long time to try to address this, and they kept blowing me off. So if you're in my world, I've been in this business for thirty years, and what you do is you ramp it up as much as you can, right? You just do to get their attention. And that's, I finally got their attention because I copied Janice K, the, the holder of the mortgage. So just stating that fact. The letter from May first states that we understand, and this is dear Amy, and this is from Thornton Thomasetti, we understand the town of Camden is requiring you that you temporarily stabilize the easternmost end of your building at Thirty-Nine Main. I've never said that. We never required that. We never said they had to do it immediately. That was not a requirement.
Okay.
Stating that for the fact.
All right.
Okay.
Again, while you're there.
Yeah.
But the items that we were looking to address, are you comfortable with the items that, or are addressed? You've reviewed the.
Well.
Some of the plans.
It's up to you guys to make the decision.
I get it.
But I, what I'm saying is, what I said earlier, I think, is items A through H, other than H.
Yeah, the finance.
Probably addressed what you, I think that was my, what I was trying to say, probably just what you were looking for. And it's your, your decision to whether or not, decide whether or not they provided what you asked for. I think they probably did.
Mm-hmm.
H, I, I'm not sure they did, because as Bill said, it's a, you know, a construction bond. So if they go belly up or something happens, and that building is half under construction, half in a, you know, precarious place, we have the ability to either finish the job or do something else. That's what those funds are generally for, not whether or not the applicant has the financial resources to do the project, it's to protect the town's interest, because we're the ones holding this right now, right? That's, that's how I see it. So that's something I think you need to.
Yeah.
Decide whether or not that H satisfies that requirement.
Good.
Fair?
Thank you.
Yeah.
At what point, I'm going through all the requirements, there was something about a, are they supposed to demonstrate the, the sequencing plan and all of that? That's, at this stage, it was just supposed to be that they acknowledge that that will be required and not, so.
I think that's something that would come as part of the next order, because I know you discussed it, you talked about it, but that was really not in part of the interim order. I think scheduling, timing, and implementation plan, erosion control plan, how you do work underwater, how you do all that stuff is something, things that you guys need to figure out moving forward.
Right, and there's no reason, but without having that as part of their plan right now, they are not actually in a position to know how much this is going to cost, which is why, looking at the, at the Prague report, you're saying, oh, that's outdated and all of those things.
Oh, I got a formal, I did get a formal.
So, so the short answer for me is that I'm not comfortable changing that, that requirement. Ultimately, that's not what really matters here. What matters is the plan going forward, because what Bill said is that the point of that, the point of asking for all those things was so that we could get more information in order to be able to make a decision, and about what the next plan is. So we can argue all we want about whether seven or eight of the criteria were met, we could find that all of the criteria of, have been met, and that there's no viable path forward. So I don't know.
Right, but the first thing is, and I'm comfortable with, with what's on, if we can make, you know, a change to make it amenable, I think the, the effort is there i- in what's been done to address the items that were, were drafted by us. And I would like to basically say, you know, thank you very much. You've hit the objectives in a satisfactory way. What's the next phase? That's what I'd like to do.
And I can understand that we have a, we have a difference of opinion on that. This, this didn't make me feel more comfortable at all. This made me feel like really, really uncomfortable.
What, what.
And I don't, I don't think it's going to be useful for us to go through all of those things. We have a clear disagreement. I think there's, it's clear there's a really hostile relationship with the town, which is confusing to me because the criticism that I would have had and that I think other people have had in the past is that the town has actually been too accommodating. So that's what I've been hearing, and I really, really sympathize with, I now have a really different perspective of what they have to deal with in the code enforcement office, because to be hearing at the same time that they are bending over backwards to do, to try to make this possible, I mean, that's the tone that I have heard. And then at the same time, hearing from you guys that, you know, you, you think there's some bias where Jeremy's leading the engineer astray, that's, that's very concerning to me. It's not one of the evaluation criteria, but it doesn't demonstrate to me that you have a full understanding of what needs to happen there. But I do agree that many of the criteria have been met, it's just not leading me to feel better. So I don't, I don't know how to move.
We stipulated eight conditions, and, and as, as the reports were tonight, they have been orderly and timely and thorough and, and prompt in meeting all of those criteria.
I'd say seven, I guess, out of the eight.
I think that's, that's our first order of business, just to certify that, yes, those criteria have been met. And the next question is, what, what does come next? What about, I think Jerry and me just referred to the timing and the scheduling and implementation. I think that's, that comes next, but, but let's do the first things first here.
I would agree that, I think, seven out of the eight have been met.
But with the differences with, with eight, with what's there.
I think two hundred thousand was too little to ask.
Because of what?
And they think.
Because of why?
Do we really want to go into that? Because Prague Marine, I said five years ago that it was going to be two hundred thousand dollars to do the work, and it didn't include any permitting.
And, and yet.
So I think, I don't think it got less expensive in that time period, and I think the scope has expanded.
Do you think?
But I'm not qualified to say.
Do you think that the quote is wrong that they got?
Yes.
It's a recent quote.
To meet our expectations, I, my goal here is to make sure that this building can be safe for the community. I am not an engineer. We were told that we are supposed to go off of the testimony that we receive. The only engineer that has given us an opinion of the state of that building told us it was dangerous, and I believe it's, we're still being told that it's dangerous, for some for different reasons and some for the same reasons. But what I'm actually hearing, I was really hoping that after this, we're going to say the engine, just in the same way you said, you know what, the, the propane isn't as much of an issue. I do think that's, that's great news that the propane goes through the sidewalk, all of those things. That, there's a lot that, that you learned that is helpful and making me feel better, but the risk of the building collapsing is not a small thing. And what I'm hearing is that that is actually possibly more extreme than what, I thought the guy was going to say, oh, you know what, we'd, because of this brace and this brace and this, and what we found is that it's actually not as much of a risk. But is there anybody that can say that? So that we have some time to say, we can look at this, you can do the full repair, it can go through the, the application process that is needed. I am supportive of the building rehabilitate, being really rehabilitated. I think the, probably the best bet would be for the building to be, to, to give you ZBA approval to rebuild in that location. That's what has been told to me a bunch of times, that it would be the safest thing. I'm not at all convinced there's a plan for staging for how.
It's a historic building.
Right.
And we just thought that he's talking, you can't, and that's why we've been working on that.
I just don't know where you're going to put all the stuff, how you're going to deal with the sediment.
We haven't.
The engineering report.
Okay, but, so you are asking me to vote on something, there are many aspects of this I might feel comfortable with. I'm not going to, if you want to quibble about why I think it's going to be more expensive, then we're going to be here all night. I think it's probably not useful to do that. I'm not going to vote in favor of the fact that they met that requirement. That doesn't mean I'm not willing to continue to have conversations about what the plan is moving forward. It doesn't mean that I'm not willing to say, this is how you do move forward. I just don't want to vote that they've met all eight criteria. That's.
Okay. Are we able to move forward with new plans and a next phase?
If you wish.
If.
Nothing that requires you to, you asked the question, should you go ahead and say that these.
Yeah.
Requirements have been met, and I think that's not a bad idea because you ordered them to be met.
Mm-hmm.
And now you're here to see whether or not they are, but you can move forward in terms of what the next phasing and plan will be, and maybe it won't matter in terms of number eight. It may, I don't know.
Mm-hmm.
Depends on what you think. But I don't think you're paralyzed, because it appears you can have a two-to-one vote, and you need three votes.
Mm-hmm.
Affirmative votes to proceed, so I'm just reading the room here, that that vote to say that all eight items have been sufficiently submitted is not going to pass.
Okay.
It sounds like.
But can we, can we move forward anyhow even without that?
Sure.
And is it fair that we can discuss the next phase of what the plans are and limitations of that?
Can I ask you what I would need on the last requirement for financing? Do I need to call the first and get it up to two hundred thousand? What, what is it that I need to fulfill that requirement?
Right, that's what the order says.
So what you're saying is, right now, the credit line was one hundred and sixty-eight thousand. I have liquid cash, so if I go down to the first and say, here, take my cash, fold my cash, and then.
I think that's why I want to hear more about the sequencing, so.
No, I, can I just finish? I just need to make sure.
I thought you were asking a long time.
Would that be, if I, if I gave them the cash and had that extra sitting there in reserve to protect, would that fulfill that?
Is that the proper wording that's needed?
The point was that it was the third party issuing a letter saying that if they were to issue a credit, there would be funds sufficient to back up that letter of credit. That's a little different than just a bank account, because now you've got a statement from the third party saying, yes, we have these funds and we can do this. It wasn't about issuing a letter of credit yet, it was saying that there'd be sufficient funds for a letter of credit to issue from the bank, so.
So his letter is fine, I just need more of it.
He would change the number from one six eight to two zero zero, zero zero zero.
Okay, and he, on the letter, said he is dispersing the funds as the work is done. And the other thing we need to consider about the bank, the bank is the loan holder on this property, so they are incented to make sure the work is done and not release the funds until the work's done, because they're primarily the holder.
I do, I, that has been very helpful information that you.
And I did take your consideration. I thought about it after the last time when you said, why is Janice K the second party? I agreed with you, so we paid the seventy-five thousand on top of that to fulfill that requirement, to fulfill your need with that.
I can't believe she made you pay that, but, and, so I, I would really, it would be nice to not have this hostile, and I'm, there are things I'm uncomfortable with, but I didn't, there, there are things I think you went above and beyond with, so let's just.
I'm frustrated because I was jumping through all these hoops to try to get this done in a very short time, and then I'm like, oh my gosh. I looked at all these newspaper articles that are out there about, and it scared me, and so I just, I don't want the misconception that this is a bad building. I will tell you, if you look through the engineering reports, the structure of the building is great. The floor is great.
Where does it, did you say there is, I really would, it would be very comforting to have something that says it's, the building's not going to fall down and it doesn't need an emergency repair.
And Jeremy, if you look on this, the reason I was trying to fulfill, you wrote to Larry, this is back in October, about that one failing pier that was dangerous, and if it wasn't, it was dangerous to life. And so I looked at that personally as, I need to fix that because I'm the owner of this building, and I don't want to be responsible for anything that is dangerous. I live in this community. So I called the structural engineer right away after I got the building and said, we have to fix this. So then I went to Jeremy, and I said, he said, I need stamped plans. So that's why I went back to, and that's where that letter from him is saying, the town of Camden, that's where, why he said that, because I said, Jeremy, that the code enforcement officer is requiring stamped plans, not just our verbal of what we're going to do, but they want a stamp on it from you, not from me. And so that's why it says that, not because he didn't visualize it. He was down under there, he took pictures. He was down under there. He took pictures. It's all in the report. He has load bearing drawings.
Does he not think that, that the building is?
No, he thought, he thinks it's a great building.
He doesn't think it's dangerous.
And, and to be very honest with you.
Does it say in here that he thinks that it's not accurate that it's a dangerous building?
Where, he, he's a.
That would be really helpful to know.
Can you, can you look at the memorandum? This is my copy. And these are the pictures and everything that, and it even talks about the brackets. Oh, the other thing that was a misconception that you might not want to worry about, the building is not leaning into Camden deli. He did measurements between the two. And if you look at this right here, because your engineer had talked about.
Is it leaning into the smiling cow?
No, it is not touching. And what, this is very interesting. If you look at this picture that they took, the whole historical picture, it's showing how the smile, this building was there before the smiling cow. I don't know if you can see it. The smiling cow, it's an independent structure. The smiling cow was moved there after. Do you see the smiling?
Yeah, everybody knows.
And he took measurements between the front to the back of the building, from the front to the back, and it is not leaning in any way. And if you look at the historical registry, that's why they have these two doors there. Those buildings were made to be close like that. It even talks in the historical registry about how the very narrow closeness of the buildings is how they built them. And they left that little space in there so they could access it after the fire. There's a lot of interesting.
There is no space between the smiling cow and this building.
There is. And if you look at his measurement reports, Tom, is that, is that building leaning on yours?
Nobody said it's leaning on.
Anyway, we have one.
He hasn't owned the smiling cow. This is, I, could you point to me where it says? That would be enormously helpful to have an engineer say, it's not going to fall down anytime soon. That is the crux of it for me. Does it say in here that, that they're just, because you disputed all these other findings? Is the building not structurally unstable?
That is not what he was paid to do. He was paid to do a load bearing analysis of each pier and to determine how to repair them so they're in the same structural framework to keep the historical integrity, what to repair them with, and that's all detail. What types of braces?
Okay, so what we need, what, as a select board member, I feel that my job is to evaluate whether there is a threat to the public because of the unstable building. And we went through that whole process where that was evaluated. And the, the only way for, for it me to feel that we have, because there's a difference between this temporary repair and the long-term repair, and it would be easier to move forward if the emergency temporary pair were not necessary. If somebody could say, you know what, there's time to look at this properly and to do it in the right way. And then it would feel very easy for me to move forward to say, go on with your next steps and get the stamped plans and let's look at them. It is alarming to me to hear that there's a temporary emergency repair. Because what you said at the beginning of all this, when, tonight, made it sound very, you were like, it's going to fall down. We need to, and you're so mad that Jeremy wouldn't let you do it and.
It's okay. I think the reason why that was addressed was because of what was written before. And so they're trying to address that.
I was trying to address your.
Where, does, okay, so, I, I think that's very simple. What I need in order to, to move forward is a professional engineer to provide an opinion that the building is not at risk of imminent collapse.
That's not part of the assertions. And I, and I want to explain something. I paid $40,000 to get the best engineer who specializes in this based upon your concern of the expedited nature of this. Remember when we talked about it? I sped it up so it would be ready. Honestly, at this point now, the Army Corps permit is in. The DEP permit is in. The plans are going to be ready this week. The builder is ready.
To do the temporary repair or to do the permit repair?
To do the full repair. He's ready.
And how are you going to control the sediment? How are you going to keep the sediment from migrating into the harbor?
That's the engineer already met with, that's the engineer. I'm not a specialist.
Is there going to be a cofferdam? Is there going to be, are you going to remove the tank?
I have no idea. I have no idea. I'm not that person.
What is the timing? Do you have any idea on the timing with plans and construction?
So I talked to the, or I didn't. Sabago Technics is the civil engineering firm that we hired to talk to the DEP and the, to, to handle all of that mitigation stuff. And, and I, all that paperwork. That has already, I asked Jeremy to upload it today. There's 108 pages to the DEP and the Army Corps of Engineering. Everything that you're asking me.
I want a one-page memo from a structural engineer saying that the building is not at risk of falling down anytime soon. That would really.
In this is because you believe the building is in danger.
And if you could just tell me that it's, I, because, listen, Amy, I am not an engineer myself. We are bound to listen to the expert testimony. So just provide one expert in the field that, so that when I have to listen to the, to people in the community saying, I can't believe they're just going to let that building fall down, that I can say, oh, no, 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 no. These people, all I want is, these people presented their own engineer, presented their own engineer who told us the building is relatively stable. It's not as bad as what the town said. I'm asking for one statement from any structural engineer that is willing to say that the building is stable.
Let's go on another point for a moment if we can. Thank you. I've got that as a note. Do you have any sort of timeline? I know you're getting the plans potentially this week. Do you have any sort of timeline with construction yet?
As soon our builder is ready.
So, what, I don't know.
I, I, Bilton Higgins.
Yep.
He, he is, I, he's been meeting with the engineers continuously.
What, do you have an approximate date?
As soon as we get the okay with the permits.
Yep.
He can start.
Yeah.
Oh, you're talking about time?
About, yeah.
He said. He, well, are we, are we just talking stabilization though? We're just talking, we're not talking inside.
We're, we're talking to what make, makes it safe.
Okay. He said from time to finish, it will take him approximately seven days. To, he is pre, he's already pre-made the, what do you call it? The forms? And he's made them. He got the dimensions from the structural engineer. So he will cut down on time. He has to be in downtown Main Street. And he is going to bring the forms in and then do it that way. It will take about two to three days, he said, for the forms to cure. They're using a specific type of concrete that was provided by the DEP and the structural engineer. I guess it takes two to three days. I talked to Dave St. Laurent today to see if he could keep the gate open for seven days because I was concerned, what if it gets wet? He said the lower gate is not a problem. You can keep that open for a full seven days. He said the upper gates are the ones that he will mitigate with water. He said you may get a little water runoff if we get some rain because once they start. So we're going to kind of look for a window when it's going to be the driest.
Okay.
Are you going to replace all the piers at the same time? So, so what happens if something, if, if this, the curing depends on this dry time? And that's what the building's being stabilized with. And then we get rain. How? I mean, surely you can see what I'm sort of concerned about. We don't want it to get worse and then get it, have a, a storm. And then what's, what's the plan if the water rises? Are you, at what stage, and I don't think we have, we didn't, we didn't ask for you to have all of this for tonight. So, and I'm, you know, we're all trying to sort through, like, how to do all this. What, you're not expecting us tonight to say, go for everything?
I can't do it without permits from the D, I need permits from you. I need permits from the.
We're still going to want to see the sequencing plan, how they plan to access the site.
Absolutely. Yeah. We haven't even gone to that yet. I mean, we have to just move to that stage.
What are the next permits that you need?
Well, we've submitted to the DEP. I got the historical designation all set. I've notified the five tribes, the Army Corps of Engineer. I spoke, the, we're all done. The only thing, yes.
Good, you, you.
Is Jeremy's permit.
Army Corps, I think that permit went, application went in, I think it was yesterday or the day before, the 18th. Those are a 30-day minimum. They review it for, at least for 30 days.
Yep.
And the, the tribes and the Historic Preservation Office in Augusta, that's part of that Army Corps permit. That's what that is. So it's not a permit from those folks. It's just a, a review that they're required to do. I just wanted to clarify that. There's no permits from those entities. It's just a review. They sign off on it. They say, okay, we're good. We don't have any interest or any issues with this project. DEP, I don't know where they are with it. Army Corps is at least 30 days, likely more than that. But at least 30 days for Army Corps from the date you submit it, they find it complete. I went through what, what they submitted. She sent it to me this afternoon and it looked like everything was submitted. And that's, so it's into that process of 30 days as of yesterday or the day before.
What, what else is needed from your office, Jeremy, to get them the authorization to do the work then?
Well, we'll need a building permit issued, shoreline zoning permit issued, floodplain permit issued. Those are all contingent upon having copies of the approvals from either the state and the, the state and the feds. We would also require as part of this.
Variant from the ZBA?
I'm sorry.
At what stage is the variance from the ZBA?
Right, good point. Sorry about that. The, before we can issue a, a permit, there is a provision, and Amy has referenced this in the past earlier today about the existing building code. This project falls under the International Existing Building Code. There is a provision in the International Existing Building Code that talks about historic structures. If they're in the flood zone, you don't have to, you don't need to call them a, they're exempt from the substantial improvement provision. However, if you go into our chapter 92, I think it is, is our flood code, which is different, separate code. You have to comply with both. You gotta go through both processes. That provision, there is a provision that it, it doesn't exempt the building from being a, the work being a substantial improvement. What it does says, it says you have to go to the zoning board of appeals for a variance to grant that variance so it's not a substantial improvement. Substantial improvements are something that are worth 50% or more of the fair market value of the property. Not the property, the building. The building is assessed right now at, I think, 162. So we're in, right, we're over 50%, but you have to go to the zoning board of appeals. And they, there's a procedure and.
So it sounds like there's more red tape.
Criteria.
The red tape takes longer than the construction.
Well, maybe. It might be. I don't know what the weather's going to do, right? I mean, we don't know. I think that's a big caveat here and I think we need to be, I'm concerned about, right, we have 14, I think it's 14 piers that are being replaced and they're trying to do all seven in a way.
13 or something.
Okay. I, okay, I thought I counted 14, but. How the work is taking place in seven days while allowing the water to continue to flow around these structures, right? There's 14 or 13 spread across the width of that building. And you have to have a, a plan in place to keep water away from that work. And the only way to do that is like generally coffer dams or they do very large sandbags. And then you work in dry and then, and then you, you know, sometimes you might need to pump some water out. But those are things we don't know about or have. And so like the phasing plan, I have no idea how that is going to play out. Those are things that I'm concerned about.
Okay, thank you.
And need to be addressed.
Yeah, it's, it's good to know what needs to be addressed and to me, it seems like we would want this all to be addressed as soon as possible.
I, I think it would be really helpful to know what the urgency is based on your engineer who's going to be evaluating all of this. Because you have to keep in mind that no matter what is true or not true, the only testimony that we have about the structural condition of the building sounds dire. And at the last, at the last hearing, none of that was even remotely disputed by the owners. I understand that, again, this, you guys didn't have the opportunity to, to provide testimony. But to know what the urgency level is based, I mean, I would like to table this for tonight contingent on a letter from the engineer about the level of urgency.
The engineer that you hired said that he would leave the structural integrity of the building up to our engineers because he only did a visual inspection for the dangerous building statue.
He told us that it was unsafe.
But he didn't do any load bears.
So could you do that? I'm asking for you to help me, help me be able to say with a straight face.
What the, the engineer, our engineer was, I think our engineer was asked what it would take to do the repairs. I think that's what he was asked.
That was not in our report.
And he was, and he, that's why he said, I'm not going to comment. That's why he gave the answer that Amy just said. Because he was not asked to look at what it's going to take to do the fix. Just clarifying that because that was not his job. That was not his, what his role was.
He told us, the report says the building is dangerous. There was a finding effect. We all agreed the building is dangerous based on what was presented. Nobody disputed any of that. I am completely willing to reconsider the urgency of how dangerous it is if one professional engineer provides a statement saying that the risk is not imminent.
Okay, so let's, let's move this in a different way. So we can, we all agree it's a danger, you filed dangerous building, right? If we take the temporary permit out of it and we start moving forward, so we can at least be moving in a progressive way to get the building fixed. Is that suitable for you?
I just don't understand why, if somebody looked at it that has all this experience, why he can't tell us what he assesses the level of risk to be? Because otherwise I want to be able to at least have a backup plan so that if the building does start to fail, there's a plan.
I'm a medical provider. I'm a psychiatric medical provider.
Okay.
People all the time ask me, are you homicidal? Are you suicidal? And I, and they say, yes. Do you have a plan? If they have a plan, then we move forward accordingly. You can't, you can't definitively put a number on what that risk is. We don't know how much water is coming down. We're doing the best we can to assume that we need to fix the piers as, as you guys have identified. The engineer is doing all of his load bearing studies, making sure the brackets were put in. We just need to keep moving forward and make sure that it gets fixed to satisfy everybody.
Or we need to, to safely remove it. And I just need an engineer to tell us that that is not what needs to happen, that the building. Yes, that's what they do with dangerous buildings that are too dangerous to repair. But if you just have a.
And I have the one pier fixed. Because, can we, can we fix the one pier? Do a temporary stabilization as was suggested.
A permitting expert or a.
No, no. I, I have the stamp plan. I have the stamp plan for the one plan fix. You asked to see a stamp plan. We have that stamp plan with the letter.
Could you just provide an engineer that would refute some of the stuff the town engineer said?
Another person in the back that wanted to speak to Amy, the other Amy. Did you, I need you to come to the podium though, please.
So I'm Amy Hand and I am not a Camden taxpayer, but I'm here to support Amy and Dave. And I don't understand why, if you think this is dangerous, Allison, why you just don't give them the permits that they need that you can say, let's get the building fixed.
I have.
That's what they're asking for.
I don't give permits, Amy.
But you are saying, let's wait another 30 days.
Why not?
You did. You said those exact words.
Let's wait another 30 days?
Yes. And that's what I'm not understanding. You're upset.
Well, if I said that, then I didn't need to.
You're upset because you are saying this is a dangerous building. There are people who are ready to fix it. Let them fix the building. That's all I'm going to say.
Not, that is not what's happening here. There's a lot of permitting that has to happen. You weren't here for the, the rest of the assessment.
Let's, let's, let's keep this on to what we need to do, which is, I'd like to have, let them move forward with a plan. I'd like to maybe hear a brief, a brief outline of a plan. Is that possible?
I'm so lost.
It's okay. I think the plan is appropriate and to me, it's. I think the plan is appropriate and to me, it seems like a plan is in order, right? Like, I mean, we just, you just discussed the A through H. Sounds like you're not in full agreement on everything on H. But like the next plan, we need something, right? We need a plan, how erosion control is gonna be addressed. How the phasing and implementation is going to happen. Those are just a couple of things that need to happen. If I wanted to, I could not issue a permit tomorrow for this temporary fix.
Okay.
I just couldn't. I mean, the Army Corps has to issue a permit.
Okay.
The same reason we couldn't do the boat launch. We couldn't even move forward with the boat launch.
So I guess, yep, Jeremy, Jeremy's saying, you know, you need, you need a plan. What, what you three have the opportunity to do is say, these are things that we would like to see included in the plan that would make us feel comfortable with approving it.
Yep.
So that's, I think that, you know, saying you wanna move forward with a plan and then kind of outlining some of the concerns that you want addressed as part of it, in addition to other guidance that you're gonna get from Jeremy and hopefully, you know, their, their engineers who are working on that as well.
Okay.
And that will help Bill, Bill to write something up.
That sounds reasonable.
For moving forward.
Thank you for the summary. I mean, I would direct them to have Sebago and Thornton Thomasetti come up with those implementation plans, stamp them and actual, like, how do you do the work in the river, right? It's not, it's not as simple as doing some of the repairs that people have done in the past over there. It's just not, not as simple as that.
So even on an emergency basis, you can't get a six by six post doubled up? That's, that seems to me that the, the next step necessary to do the.
Temporary repair, but it also sounds like they wanted to just move forward with the full repair. That's what it sounded like a little bit ago.
Let's get the temporary, let's get the emergency taken care of first. Can you issue a permit to do that emergency stabilization on that one pier, on the one post?
I'm not going to until we get Army Corps permits in place.
I would like to know if there's an emergency.
Well, here's the thing.
Urgency or not.
Here's the thing. We don't have a plan to deal with implementation. We have no idea how this is going to happen. We don't. I mean, you've got a plan that an engineer put on paper, which is different than the plan that the contractor provided, which the contractor provided for his initial first when Amy first inquired about a temporary repair. It was one six by six post that was gonna be sistered to the pier that's down there. The plan that we got from Thornton Thomasetti has two six by six posts that are sistered, so.
Okay, let Jeremy finish just for a minute.
I can't issue a permit based on a contractor's plan. It's an engineer who's designing that plan and that's what we have now. But we don't have, what we don't have is how they're gonna do that work to isolate that pier from the river while they're doing the work. You can't just come in and, I mean, they can't, I think they're going down to ledge with those, with those posts, right? They're just going into the mucky sediment and gonna set the, okay.
Well, the ledge is really close to the, I mean, there is a way for this. Can the town help them get the, there's some concern about the sediment and it's always been a goal, you know, there's some of these failed piers and things like that. I've always heard from everybody that it would be nice to get some of this stuff out of there that is like, the, the one thing I always hear everybody agree on is like, because it's not all, all the stuff that is accumulated under their building isn't necessarily theirs. Some of it is stuff probably that's washed there. Is there any way, like, that at least part of this could be, I've, you know, like suck, like it could suck out.
dredge the river, dredge the sediment out?
Well, the town actually has done that in the past when they needed to work on the dam and, and they, like, just like we do with the catch basins. I mean, that could be one benefit to, one of the, one of the requirements that I would like to see is that as part of the, the repair, they just make sure to get out the past, like, failed piers. I imagine that's something that they would like too. It will look better, it will be better. I'm all for helping them with even the, you know, that tank and things like that. I would support putting town resources into making this process be beneficial to everybody. Nobody wants like the old junk underneath there. And, and maybe that would help them with their erosion and sedimentation control.
I mean, remember that there's a meets and bounds of this property. I know it's a flowing river, but it's a little odd. But we only have ownership over a certain piece and then you've got all the other property owners that own the other piece, so it would have to be.
Well, I'm saying only on their property, but if we could come up with some, I would support coming up with some kind of a collaborative thing that would, there, there was some slightly contaminated sediment that was found at one point. It's in everybody's best interest, rather than telling them, hey, you gotta have a plan to deal with all of this and keep it from moving at all. I just wanna put it out there that if we were to, they take those back tricks sometimes and they just get it out and then we could at least say, we don't have to worry about any of that or.
I.
There's a way to do this collaboratively that would benefit everybody.
I mean, there's, again, there's Army Corps permitting and DEP permitting for removing sediment out of the river. That's not something that we have contemplated. It's not something they have contemplated as part of this process thus far. I mean, I'm sure.
I just wanna fix it and make it.
Can we go back, can we go back to that one pier? That's what we need right now. That's what we need to stabilize the building. We have a building that is, everybody in this room is saying, it's dangerous.
Work together.
We're, we're, this is being a town productive. We need to fix the pier and then we can work on our plan and move forward and say, okay, here are the next steps. We'll get the 200,000, we'll do this, this and that. Start market science. We need to all work together. To your point, working together, I agree. My wife and I in this community has been nothing but great ones. We're asking for some help and assistance. We'll do the labor, we'll put it on our back. We wanna move forward, we wanna fix the building, we wanna be part of that community. That's what we want.
Okay.
I think that's, that's great. You think some of the questions that are being asked are completely unreasonable and I don't think they are because people get very upset when all of a sudden a huge plume of mud goes down into the harbor. And I'm sure you don't want that either. So it's gonna be reasonable to say, there needs to be a plan to make sure that doesn't happen. If there's a completely separate temporary stabilization that needs to happen on an emergency basis and we can say, we can, we can consider that independently of the rest of the plan.
That's the six by six that I just brought up, that Ken brought up. That's what we're looking to do right now.
And I'm confused, but I, I just don't understand if that it's, it is an emergency or it's not. I wish the engineer were here just to be able to talk to us a little bit about this.
So does the Army Corps of Engineers have an expedited?
They're not gonna let it happen anyway. That's the thing.
So how long, how long will it take if you, if you start in?
I don't know what they gave to the Army Corps, if they gave the Army Corps the full on, I have to go back through. I just got it this afternoon. I didn't have a chance to go through everything. But I don't know if it included the temporary shore up plan for that one post or was it the whole, the whole project? So, right. So we, we.
So if I go, if I.
So can we get the other core to say that it's okay to do the temporary stabilization? I don't know how this works.
Could you respond? This is my neighbor and legal counsel, Kim Irvin Tucker.
Hi, I'm Kim Irvin Tucker, also from Lincolnville. Don't hold it against us. I, I've dealt quite a bit with permitting, dealing with the Nordic Aqua Farms litigation. And what, what we have to deal with here is you all created a letter back in October to the prior owner that said, hey, you got this really dangerous thing here and you've taken too long and we need to fix it and, and actions must be taken to immediately stabilize the building. Now, none of us can predict when the next January of last year's storm happens again. It could happen. So we wanna make sure that that one post.
That was the ocean. That wouldn't, just to be clear, that wouldn't have been a concern for this building.
I know, but let her finish, please.
My point is, we can't predict Mother Nature and this has been identified as something that even by the new engineers that they've retained, as something that should be addressed right immediately. And it does not take a Corps of Engineers permit to do it. The DEP has said they can give a PBR, a permit by rule, to deal with this emergency issue. And all they're asking is that this emergency issue with this one post, is it going to cause the building to fall down? I don't know. I'm sure no one can predict that, but why would we take the risk? There's a document saying it needs to be immediately addressed that was done in October of last year. So let's deal with that issue and then we'll deal with the long-term issues of the permits from the Corps of Engineers, the permits from DEP for the whole thing and, and all those challenges that will happen with the long-term project. But this one issue of dealing with that pier so that we can say that we're moving forward and everybody feels safer about the building, we think that should be dealt with now and it doesn't take a Corps of Engineers permit. They've already spoken to the DEP about getting a PBR to get that approved to, to do that one pier. Let's get the emergency issue dealt with. Is it an emergency, like it's gonna fall down tomorrow? I don't think so, but why would we take the risk? And if the engineers say that's the order in which things should be done, let's do them in that order. And it doesn't seem like a huge challenge to say, we all are worried about this one pier. Everybody said it back in October, so let's fix that one pier and then move forward in the long-term project with people that know and care about doing this the right way, who have been, you know, moving heaven and earth to try to get this done on an expedited basis. Because does it need to be done in that expedited basis? Maybe not, maybe so, but let's not take the chance. Let's do this as quickly as we can and let's start with that one pier.
I love the way that you were explaining this. Could, could, if that could be put in writing?
From the engineer.
From the engineer.
Perfect. Because that's not what we have.
Because that isn't what, I'm, I'm seeing a mix of the temporary repair and we've the full proposal and the, I, I just, that works out very easily for me.
Can it be done?
Wait. The letter is in the packet.
The letter in the packet, let me just say that.
The letter in the packet says that.
Says that we said that that corner post had to be fixed ASAP. That's not what we said. So, and that came from the engineer. What the engineer could do is say, hey, we investigated this building, we're doing plans to fix it because the town deemed it dangerous. We find that this corner post is of such significance issue that it needs to be addressed ASAP. The letter that I've seen says that we said that and that's why the engineer is providing those plans.
Okay. So are you, are you saying then?
Is that not accurate?
Do you think it's possible, Amy? Do you think it's possible to get what that's being asked for, just to say?
Yes.
A simple plan, if an engineering plan is simple, probably a little gets struck down.
They've already done that.
I don't know.
They've done a plan for the temporary fix. What they, again, what they, the cover letter that stamped says that we said it had to be fixed ASAP.
So you want it to change.
And.
I would like it to specify the state, the sequencing so that your plan is to deal with this in two phases, to deal with, that you've assessed all of these things. You told us a number of things that you think are not accurate from the original, which I'm, I'm fine with, it was very, very helpful. And for it to say, we agree it would be in the best interest of everybody to stabilize this section as the first step and that subsequent steps will be dealt with as, you know, as part of a larger plan that goes to, but that buys us some time so that I can tell people, we made sure the building's stable and now we're talking about what the long-term plan is gonna be. So I don't have to, like.
You'd be supportive of, you'd be supportive of a short-term identified plan?
Yes.
To fix that post and then to provide the adequate time to do the rest of the post.
Yes, I just wanna feel like when we leave here that we're in agreement because there were so many things that were like, this wasn't true and this wasn't true. But I wanna say, okay, we all agree that this should be done right away. Nobody knows when it really will fall down, but not to have them say, well, the only reason we really did this because the town of Camden is making us. I want us all to agree this should happen right away.
And can we also include a plan for how we're going to install it and protect the resource?
That will be required as part of.
Right. It will be required as part of the, the full plan.
How they might deal with fluctuating water levels.
But I think, I think we need it as part of this plan, how the civil engineer is going to have the contractor de-water the area so that he can put these two posts in the ground.
She's an engineer, structural engineer.
With Thornton Thomasetti?
No.
Okay.
Renee Matthews, I'm just friends with Amy, but it's part of your package already. So her structural engineer has already included a letter talking about this temporary.
Can you read that part that you think says that? Because it's.
Sure. So here's, he has signed and sealed it. Temporary stabilization on 39 Main Street. This temporary stabilization is intended to provide an alternate load path with structure and is intended, excuse me, is not intended to be a permanent repair. Temporary stabilization shall remain in place while the final repair documents are prepared and be replaced with permanent structural repair thereafter. He has signed and sealed it. He has a detailed drawing.
Beginning of the letter, please.
Excuse me?
Can you read the, it's the beginning part of it, that it's the basis for it. It's, it's the fact that the entire reason for this has been disputed and that it's saying that the reason that they're doing it is because the town of Camden is requesting it. I want to not put the burden.
Why does that matter? You are requesting it. You've requested.
It's not stamped by an engineer.
Notes, that isn't, I want any engineer to tell me what really needs to happen. You've said, the engineer the town hired got a lot of things wrong.
You've requested it in the notice of violation that you gave to.
That's not, that's not me. I just wanna be able to tell the community that the, that the, the building is, has been evaluated. The only, you know, more urgent matter is this corner and this is why it's gonna be done.
They've got a letter by an engineer stating that it's going to get it.
Doesn't say it needs to be done. It should be very easy. There, we don't need to argue about this. They said there is gonna be really easy just to change the, the wording of it. I want them to have evaluated the safety of the building.
That was, they are hired to design structures to make them safe. That's what they're doing.
It should be very easy for them to change the language to say, we evaluated the building and we think this should be done right away.
Okay.
Not, we're, we evaluated the building because it's our understanding that the town of Camden wants this done. It should be very simple.
I think you're splitting hairs.
That's okay.
You're splitting hairs. They've asked the engineer to prepare long-term plans for permanent and short-term plans. Here's the short-term plan. He's got detailed on how to do it. It's in your package. It's ready to go.
I wanna know why, I, we've heard Jeremy now say, he, he didn't request an immediate, if you guys wanna do it in two stages, I heard from the.
They, they were hired because it's already been identified that there's a problem with the building. They were not hired to come in and offer an opinion on what is your opinion on the building. They said, there's a problem with the building, what's the next step? And this is what these, the feds have done.
Wasn't our job to evaluate what every problem with the building is. The burden of proof is on the owner now because it's been determined to be a hazardous building.
Splitting hairs. Let's get the building fixed.
Sure. Just do the, it should be very easy.
On those set of plans, we don't have an implementation plan, how they're going to, to implement an erosion control plan while they, they install those. That's what we need.
All you, all you need is an erosion control plan as when they do the temporary, is that correct?
So we make sure that when we go again, that I'm getting.
Absolutely.
When we submit it, we're not gonna, oh, by the way, you need this, this and this.
That's right.
And we've gotten all along.
I think your attorney really, I mean, she, she's doing a great job, like it's every, when she's explaining it, it's very easy for me to go along with that. I think she understands kind of what we want or what I want.
Seven years.
Very good. Maybe you could summarize.
It's the pain of seven years.
Maybe you could summarize then for us what can be done.
I, I believe in terms of the erosion control issue that that would be in the PBR they typically are in, in the DEP permit.
Let me just ask, so replacing a six by six post goes on top of the pier. There's no.
Chasing to the pier, onto the, into the sediment of the river.
Okay, I misunderstood. I thought it was I thought it was the sistering, the one that sits on the pier.
Sistering that 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 pier or that existing pier, but it's on either side of that pier and then running up and then it's ratcheted across on top end.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
I mean, we just don't let people pound or construct things into sediment and not have.
Yeah, no, I assume I assume it was not doing.
Place or boom to keep all that sediment there, right? You can't have it leaving the site. It's in the resource already.
So what you would want is an explanation of the erosion control.
Yeah, and there are standards in the DEP Section Four section if they are getting a permit by rule for this that speak to if the water level is a certain height, what you have to do with like a coffer dam or something to do these kinds of repairs. That's in the permit by rule standards, and I don't have a copy of what they've submitted for that.
But that's why I say it's it's dealt with with the PBR regulations and permits. So the erosion control will be dealt with in accordance with the DEP requirements. And if we can, you you've already got the stamp planned for that portion of this repair. Um, and and then we can deal on a longer range, indicate that we'll this is the first step and then that the more comprehensive replacements of the piers will be in due course when the permits are all obtained because that's when you run into the Corps of Engineers permit and and other issues with that.
Okay, so where does this leave us, Bill? Do we have anything that we can give to them that's clear?
Well, your role, of course, is under the statute, the Dangerous Building Statute. You have an initial interim order, and if you wish to issue another interim order as to what you want them to do, then that would be what you would do tonight. Perhaps it's just on this temporary fix issue with this particular plan. And you may issue an order that says, from your perspective, you've now exercised jurisdiction over this building, that you are allowing X, Y, and Z to occur, subject to X, Y, and Z permitting. I don't know that I was looking for, what is the date of the engineer's plan that you're referencing?
May 1st, I think.
Yes, May 1st.
May 1st.
Okay. So you could move to issue a simple interim order at this point and continue the matter otherwise to another date if you are in agreement with regard to this specific temporary repair. It's going to be replaced in the end, based on the May 1 engineering stamped engineering report and subject to permitting from DEP. I I'm still frankly confused as to whether or not, I've heard two different things as to whether or not the permit by rule is recognized by the Army Corps as being sufficient.
Yeah, so years ago, Army DEP used to do those permits and they notify the Corps and then you kind of there's a whole process. Those are completely separate. They're standalone completely now. There is no working together. Army DEP doesn't send stuff to Army Corps and review it for them, and it's not together like it used to be a decade and a half ago. I don't know why an Army Corps permit wouldn't be quite required for a temporary repair, but I got to believe that they would have some sort of provision to facilitate or just do not any, do not any enforcement while the temporary repair is done. Do you know, see where I'm going? It's hard for me to say.
We are all on the same page. So if this board votes in a few minutes to say they're going to issue another interim order to allow the temporary repair based on the May 1 stamped engineering report, but they can't proceed with the work until they get an Army Corps permit.
I I can I can speak to Teresa Carpenter tomorrow. I'll call some send an email and call her.
I have her email.
You see what I'm I mean, we want to understand what the process is because earlier you said they can't do it.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to figure out if that's the case, then it's not for 30 days.
I would prefer to let our engineers talk to the Army Corps.
Yeah, that's fine. I'm copying me on that.
So the motion can be just whatever permits are necessary.
And the revised letter from the engineer, that's what it's.
So you want him to remove?
That it was a directive from the town.
Yes.
The first sentence, I think.
No, and I want him. I I want it to say that this is the logical course of action, that this should happen right away. I don't like that you're continuing to dispute that the building is dangerous. I'm will I would love for somebody to say it's not, but.
Well, let's just.
Well, I think I think what they were disputing came out of, and I hate to go back and regurgitate all this, but in our hearing, right, there was a lot of things that concerned me, concerned you, and we didn't know all those answers, right?
Yeah, I get all that.
Which led to the interim order, which led them to do the information, the digging that they did, which proved some of those things weren't issues. Thank goodness.
Right.
Right? Beautiful.
Yeah, right, that's all fine, but I just want them to say which ones are issues. And I want somebody to be taking responsibility. And it sounds like it's a very minor wording issue, and it would make me feel better.
Do you think?
Do I need to go to the bank as well?
I for this temporary for me personally. Well.
Is going to maybe make a package and say, as as part of this new interim order, let us at least check off all of the previous interim orders, A through A through H, maybe A through G, maybe A through H. I'd like to see something accomplished in this session tonight, and I think that is something that we can accomplish.
Um, it's not something I'm willing to vote for that as part of the larger plan. It's not going to stop them from doing anything. I I'm happy with them shoring up the building and going through this temporary phase. I don't think they need to have to show that they have any more money in order to be able to move forward with that. The full plan, so so the answer to me would be, no, you don't need to do that.
CD, I want to move that past.
Well, then you can.
Can I go to the bank, give them the money, have them write a letter, and will we be past that first part?
I'm not in a position to evaluate that right now.
You said change the 168 to 200 off the lot of ASAP, I think would suffice.
I don't think anybody will reject the letter if you send that in.
And we just want to make sure we're.
Yeah.
Well, I am not even thinking about that right now.
I don't mean to write anybody's motion for them, but if we could say that they have fully satisfied A through G and that with the additional money that they're going to take to the bank that they discussed to get it up to the 200, that they're in compliance with that once they do that and we get the letter, once they provide that additional letter from the bank, does that?
That sounds reasonable to me.
I I'll be honest with you, we've been talking about this for much longer than I expected, and I am not thinking about that right now. I would much rather I I you're going to have different select board members to deal with in in a little bit. I'd rather just talk about moving forward. I'm not prepared to vote on that part of it right now. It doesn't really matter either for what is allowed to go forward in the future.
Okay, so can we?
If I could just make a little persuasive argument.
Okay.
I think it would be helpful as we're dealing with a new interim order, actually to make it look like, to give peace to people in the public, actually, to show that these people are committed and have accomplished by the by the deadline, in fact, before the deadline. It was a May 13 deadline, they got it by May 9th, that they have shown that they are committed to doing this and have accomplished that. And I think it would give comfort to people in the community to see that these two new owners are have in in good faith, tried to fulfill all those requirements and have done a really good job doing it and for you guys to acknowledge that, I think. And if you want the additional money and we have this additional thing, then I think that shows that the cooperative nature of the working relationship, you know, that we're moving forward together and that you guys are acknowledging that and they're acknowledging it as well. And so I think, you know, as we try to work on something that's a real community issue with the beloved building, that's an historic building, that I think it's really important for us to show the community coming together and these people working with you all and and with Jeremy on that. And so that's why I'd suggest if you guys could acknowledge that, it would be very helpful.
I think it would have been a really different conversation, but the entire however many minutes it lasted was was Amy yelling at like accusing, and that didn't feel collaborative at at all. So I don't think we can.
We got to get beyond that. We got to just stick with the facts.
I'd like to just move forward and you can I I'm not. I didn't even I have a family issues going on that I didn't even wasn't going to come to this meeting tonight, but then I realized that they're not going to be able to move forward with anything. I am trying to be here. I'm trying to do what I can do. It would be easier if there were other select board members here and maybe they would. But I'm not prepared to vote for that H part of this tonight.
Okay, how about A through?
How about A through G?
Sure.
There we go.
There we go.
Can we get a vote on A through G that they've achieved all the elements?
So moved, I'll even make the motion.
Second.
Super. And then the next piece is?
Will they provide H within a certain amount of time to my office, then we can settle that one by X.
I know.
By the next meeting.
There is nobody presiding over this. It's like, oh, they didn't do H. It's the whole next step is in our hands anyway. We set that standard. We don't need to, we can let them move forward with or without it. I just.
So the next piece, yes, I think it's a good idea, maybe by the next select board meeting that we've got H satisfied. So at least we've got them all all those elements satisfied. Now, the other piece that we need to do is decide on issuing an interim order that allows them to fix. The temporary fix and to subject applicable permits to shore up that side of the building.
And a revised statement of work or explanation of the scope from the engineer.
Yep, and they can get the revised statement from the engineer as far as the reason why that needs to be done.
I'm also fine with something that says it doesn't need to be done and it can all wait. So just to be clear, if you wanted to provide that instead, that would be okay, too. Then you wouldn't have to do the temporary thing and we wouldn't be have to have this conversation. But if that's something that when you go back and you're able to say, you know what? The town said that's actually not something that they evaluated. And he says, you know, the best thing to actually do is that is just wait and save your money on that and do the whole thing collectively. If if he thinks that's the smartest thing to do and puts that in writing, I think that would also.
Would the town be okay with that?
Could you bring could you bring that to maybe?
I would be okay with that.
AJ, yeah, so if you could maybe bring that to the next select board meeting? That's on two, it's.
Well, then we would have some word of them.
It's June 3rd.
You know, then he would.
I don't even think it need to come to a select board.
Well, that's the same.
Jeremy gets a letter, it's either it's going to be one path or the other.
Okay.
One saying you don't need it, that they don't need to do it. The other path saying, yes.
We're going to include this as part of the the big fix.
Okay.
Right, and then we move forward with all those other things.
All right.
And then and then if they need to do it, they can move forward once they have the permits.
But they could come back with a, you know.
Right, then we'd be ready for the next phase of you saying this is the permits we got and this is all the big thing and this is what we're going to do.
Great, so do we need to, Bill, legally? Do we need to do a interim order to allow all that we just said?
Well, I think you've made the first motion that you've said that they you've made a finding what which I will put into a second interim order, that they've satisfied the submission of the requirements of A through G. That's your first motion.
Yep.
And if I'm following you, your second motion is going to be, you're going to authorize the owners to proceed with the temporary repair per the May 1 2025 engineering plan, subject to obtaining all necessary permitting, which shall include a best practices erosion control plan.
And that they're going to revise, actually get a revised note from the engineer as to the reason why that is or is not necessary. Instead of saying the town is requiring it, it's saying that it's structurally required, or it's not.
Yes.
And Jeremy is prepared to accept that.
I might write that a little more narrowly.
Yeah, you can.
That's okay.
But that's the idea.
That's the intent.
So if that's the emotion, then somebody should make that motion and I'll put it into a second interim order.
Sure, I will move that. I thought we already had.
This is where you can say so moved and it becomes whatever Bill said.
I was waiting for it to. We read it.
Or just say so moved, Bill?
So the motion is going to be.
I did.
To author authorize the owners to proceed with the temporary repair per the May 1 2025 stamped engineering plan to proceed, subject to obtaining all necessary permitting, comma, which shall include a best practices erosion control plan, semicolon, and they shall submit a revised letter removing the comment about the town requiring this repair and including a statement from the engineer that they believe it is necessary to do this temporary repair before moving on to the final plan.
Or not.
Or not.
Or not.
Or it's not required.
But I guess he's gonna or she's gonna say yes. That's what I'm suggesting is the motion.
Absolutely.
Do we need to mention the erosion control? That seems to be a particular detail.
I think Jeremy said he wanted us.
I know, but I don't see the necessity for it. If the if the permits require it, then it's already covered.
I think we already want to, we want to see it.
It's okay to put it in there. Yep.
If you're good with it.
So we've got this on tape and I can write it out after I read it to myself tomorrow.
Thank you.
I I did already move so but so moved is.
We have a second?
I will second, yes.
Can we go any further discussion? And we'll go for a vote? All in favor? Great.
Can I say one last thing?
Hang on, I don't know.
I just want to apologize if I've offended anybody. No, I I'm sincerely very, I was so nervous about preparing this tonight and I tried to make sure everything was concise on orders because I just wanted to make sure I had everything. If it came across as combative, that wasn't my intention.
We do have a lot of the same goals, actually, and it's stressful.
Prepared.
Okay, very good. We got we got a thank you, thank you for your time.
It is stressful on both sides because we have to answer questions afterwards and so.
You good?
No, I do.
And?
And?
Oh, gosh.
What are you doing in this interim order in terms of saying what is the next step to come back and when?
You know, Bill, that's just.
I don't think.
What do you recommend? Or I.
If you don't want to handle this now and you simply.
Well, they're going to let us know by a certain time. What, I'm sorry, 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 sorry.
Go ahead, Bill.
You could table it to a point when they've submitted sufficient detail in an engineering plan that it's ready to be back before you and you could give a deadline for that.
What do you think a reasonable deadline is for that, Jeremy, based on?
Well, I was just looking at the calendar and June 17th, it looks like is your second meeting in June. That probably won't give them their Army Corps permit yet. I don't know if that matters and I don't know where they are. So it's either, I mean, I I just I'm thinking back.
Be contingent on whether they proceed with the the temporary repair.
If the temporary repair happens because their engineer says, yeah, we need to do this now, we're going to go, we're going to facilitate that likely within this timeframe.
Yep.
However, if their engineer says, we're not going to do that because we're going to do this work anyway in July or late July or August, and I re bring that up and I'm thinking about the weather. When we talked about timing and the best time to do this, we had at the last meeting, we had talked, August is probably the lowest flow level when you're going to be have the ability to actually probably do all the work at one time. So I'm just thinking, I mean, that is contingent upon the weather, right? I'm just thinking maybe it's, you know, is it July 1st? Is it, and I hate to say July already because it's just so crazy to me. It's probably still seems like March.
By by July 1st, do you think it's reasonable that they'll have data?
I suspect they'll have everything if ready to go July 1st, right? Your permit should be in place from Army Corps.
So why don't we get an update on July 1st on the status then?
Like, what are we doing on July 1st?
That's when I think.
We have permits.
We bring the plan to the select board under an interim order for that's going to look at like timing, implementation and completion dates and things like that, right?
Getting down to the nuts.
That's kind of how I'm thinking about this.
Before that, would it be possible because of?
Sure, if if you can get the job, if you can get the work done and the permits done beforehand, sure. We're we're trying to set a reasonable deadline to say when to get it done.
Would be the second meeting.
Yep, but as far as to put into the into the order, I'd rather say, you know, July 1, but if they get it done sooner, there's no reason why we can't move it on to.
For the larger plan?
For the larger plan.
It's hard to imagine that that.
But they might. I'm not going to say they can't.
And if it's not ready at that time, we could continue it.
Yeah, I'm sure we'll get, but we put it down to get an update July 1st. That's when we want to see a plan, July 1st for an implementation plan.
I I wasn't there another other wording that you had, like until they say they're ready? Was there another word, a way to word that that?
Well, they could.
I guess I don't, that's that's fine. I just.
If they if they're ready beforehand, great.
I want to make sure they know what they need to provide at that point, right?
I don't want to force them to have this when we're just, I guess, if they're I'd like to leave them the flexibility of saying we're ready or we're not ready so that it doesn't force this process if they don't feel they're ready.
Always request an extension.
So June, maybe June 17th with a hope and then really it likely continued to July 1st. I mean, I'm thinking they've got to provide for that meeting, right? The redo of H, right? They got to provide that financial information.
That's going to be done earlier, probably.
Right, I know, but that's going to come as part of that packet. That and implementation plan and like us how they're implementing this, the whole thing and erosion control plan, all your permits with the regulators. And then we gotta go to the zoning board of appeals somewhere in there. I would hope that they would maybe try to move that sooner than July 1st just so that that is going through that process.
Can I stop you there?
We have so much else on our agenda.
Go ahead, go ahead, Bill.
Is there anything they need to proceed to the ZBA that they don't have in hand now? I mean, it could be scheduled is my point, or start to be scheduled.
Yeah. I don't think there's anything.
Is there any way that some of this conversation could be continued to a subsequent meeting so that we can, like, address our wastewater issue?
We're about to be done.
Okay.
This is the last motion. Basically, your motion's going to be, you're tabling the matter to June 17th, by which time they will have filed the correct letter for item H. They'll provide an implementation plan. They'll provide an erosion control plan. And they will be somewhere in the process of the variance application process at the Board of Appeals.
Okay, so moved.
Where they are. Yep. Those are the items. And that's what you'll review on June 17th.
June 17th is kind of like the plan with the idea that we would continue it if they needed it.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right. Vote? All in favor?
Here we go.
Great. Thank you. It's okay. Thank you.
But now you have to say for wastewater.
That's okay. Well, we've got.
That's why I said it's a penalty. Speaking of wastewater.
All right. All right.
I'll send it to you tomorrow.
Who was the car dealer? Audra, are you running away to? All right.
I don't know. It's our collective, our collective, um, for ourselves.
What's your email?
You're not bumping me, are you? Chris, you're not bumping my next item, are you?
I'm sorry, what?
Pointing all.
So K dot fervent Tucker at gmail dot com.
And then we'll do it.
Alrighty. I will, uh.
It should be.
What they'll do is they'll.
Like 30 seconds.
And then we'll send it to you. If this is too complicated at this point, for this one. I heard. The OCD came through.
We're gonna go with letter D.
Thanks very much. So you live down there in that compound?
What's that? It's really quick. It's really quick. Here's, here's, here's Ken.
Here we go.
Here's Ken. Next item, next item on the agenda? Sorry.
All right.
I guess we'll reconvene real quickly. Item, item, letter D. Confirmation of alternate code enforcement officer Andrew Lowe. Can you give us a brief?
Sure, really quick. We have had agreements in the past with Rockport and Belfast for code coverage. This is for when like the code officers get sick or he has to go on vacation or he's not at a conference or something. We ran into this problem last two weeks ago. Clint had a, a health issue, was out for a week and we could, were struggling getting inspections done. So what we're asking for is to appoint Andrew Lowe, who was our former assistant fire chief. He's now the code officer and plumbing inspector in Rockport, doing a great job. Clint and he work very well together. And we're just looking for that coverage so that when either one of them is out, the other one can cover and do a plumbing inspection. And under state law, you have to appoint them. So that's what, that's what this is about.
Okay.
We are not going to track time. I have talked with the town manager in Rockport. I've talked with Andrew Lowe. I've talked to Clint. We're just gonna help each other out when we need to and move forward.
That sounds right.
Well, if I were them, I would be very concerned after hearing everything that they just heard because you should make some stipulations.
Anyway, let's, let's, let's move it along, please.
Okay. Thank you very much.
We need help.
Do we have a motion?
Yes, I move that we appoint Andrew Lowe to be the, uh, something code.
Alternate code enforcement officer and plumbing inspector. Yep, thank you.
Do you, do we have a second?
Second, yes.
And a vote? All in favor? Great. Thank you.
Jeremy.
All right.
Thank you, Rockport. Oh, my God.
Well, they're, they're getting closer, but we got item E.
We'll come to one of your meetings and say.
They did ask.
Pick a, pick a good one. We'll all turn up.
This is like team building.
Excuse me. While Rock, the folks from Rockport have waited a while, is it, can we just do a quick vote to go ahead and move up item F in front of item E?
You literally just told me just now, we're not gonna, like, I was like, I don't really wanna do that because I wanna get through the budget quickly and you were like, we're not going to. Can we just do the budget quick? Like, do you, I, I just wanna make sure that we're not gonna drag the budget out through with this.
To answer my question, I guess you're saying no.
I would vote to approve the budget. How many, I would, before I answer that, I'd just like to know how many questions you have about the budget?
I don't know.
I don't wanna, I wanna make sure that we get that done tonight and I don't wanna be here until 11:00. I'm ready to approve both of these things very quickly.
Okay, that's good. Do you have any concerns with the approval of the wastewater budget?
Is there anybody here to address it from the budget? I don't have any.
Yes, if there are any questions, we can certainly answer them.
Do you have any questions?
No.
I don't have any questions.
No, I asked all my questions throughout the year, so. I was aware that the rate was gonna go up. I think everybody was and I think we should continue on this path as I'm maybe one of the only wastewater customers or certainly present among the three of us select board members comfortable with the rate increase. I don't, you know, the, our only other option would be to use more taxpayer funding to subsidize that. And if we were gonna do that, then we should have done it during the budget time. So it looks good to me. Yeah, I'm ready to approve it as presented.
Do you wanna make a motion?
So moved. To approve the wastewater agreement. Oh, no.
I will second it.
Budget, budget.
The budget, wastewater budget.
The FY 26, do you have a second?
I did second it. I will second it.
Thank you. And a vote? Terrific. Passes 3-0. And our final item, next to final item, approval of wastewater agreement with Rockport. Brief summary, Audra?
Please. Oh, gosh. So this select board appointed a, a small group of people to work on the details of an agreement with Rockport. It's a fairly short-term agreement, five years. It lays out all the conditions of Camden accepting and treating wastewater from Rockport, which includes, which is new and, and a little bit different from before. Similar requirements that you would see in like an industrial user permit. So there's, and this, and a lot of it is just for reporting purposes. There's a table about measuring different heavy metals and, and other PFAS and, and.
Fats oils and greases and various.
Yeah, yeah. Fats oil and greases, there is a, there is a standard for that. Because I get, do you, do you really want me to get?
I can, I can do a quick, I feel ready to go.
Happy to go in the details, but do you really want me to? So there, there is a, there is, for fats oil and grease is a little different than all the other parameters that are going to be measured because there could have an impact on Camden's collection system if it gets to a certain level. So that's going to be measured with, with some sort of penalty attached to it for exceedances. Everything else, it's really just for monitoring purposes so we can appropriately treat their waste and identify any problems that may occur. We spent a lot of time, this is probably the most important parameter of all of them, is the flow where there's, we really tried very hard to make sure that, that 90,000 gallons, which has a surcharge attached to it, adequately reflects sort of Camden's capacity at the Rossin Avenue Treatment Plant, which is different than, or sorry, the Rossin Avenue Pump Station, which is different than the capacity of the Treatment Plant and the risks that exceeding that 90,000 gallons per day poses to the town of Camden and our permit and our collection system.
So there's incentive to go ahead for the town of Rockport to try to maintain that in which the major thing, if I recall, that can affect that is addressing the INI issues, which is rainwater essentially going in, which, that's why we have many different projects in Camden to go ahead and address that for ourselves and we're looking for that from Rockport.
Yeah, well, they're, they're incentivized through this to, to continue addressing that.
People probably didn't hear either when we discussed this before is that there is basically the capacity to do that, but the 90,000 threshold is important because of the Rossin Avenue capacity, which is where the line will come in.
Correct.
Do we, anyone I know from, from the town of Rockport that would like to speak on any of the elements that are concerns or anything that you like, especially about the agreement?
I think we just wanted to thank the, the small working group and the select board here for working with us. And I think we're, we have an agreement we can, we can live with. And I know Camden, the negotiators were careful to make sure they had an agreement they could live with and we, we thank you.
Yeah, I just wanna say that I think that even, now this is the first time that sort of both groups are discussing this in public that much. We had that one other meeting, but it's, even though it's been a little bit of a painful process for everybody, I think that we, both towns have come out understanding a lot more about their collection systems. It's been frustrating to, to me to sort of, especially to see some criticism of the, the Rockport Select Board. I first endured criticism of the Camden Select Board and felt like that was a little bit unfair and ended up feeling like, wow, what Rockport did was really, really good, I think, for both communities in terms of the study that you did and that entire process. I have actually read the majority of Rockport's studies and the committee reports and it was, I just think extraordinarily helpful and that Rockport residents should actually be really, really grateful to that, your select board. For anybody that's listening right now, because a really thorough job was done and the only way that we can move forward is with sort of both communities understanding what the real costs are. And so that has allowed us to have a really substantive conversation about like, how much is this service worth? And the fact that we were first to look at it more in Camden and think like, oh, well, what if we didn't end up with Rockport's revenue? What would that be worth to us or not? What are our real problems? If it hadn't been for that, I think a lot of questions wouldn't have been answered about Camden's system. We didn't realize we had such an issue at the Rossin Avenue Pump Station. We didn't realize we had exceedances, you know, at the plant itself. And so I feel like we're in a really good position with this agreement because it's tied to the actual risks. And I hope that, you know, also it's, it's set up so that if it does expire without us doing anything, there are some automatic things that kick in. We really focused on trying to not leave us in this limbo place of saying, well, everybody's just gonna do their best and then, like the old inter-local agreement didn't say what would happen if it expired without a new one. And so this one has some incentives. There's some things that are automatically gonna kick in as higher rates at the end, which provides, I think, an incentive for both towns to say, okay, after, it wasn't even written in there. After two years, both towns are gonna look at, we're gonna meet and talk about like, how much have we been able to reduce our INI in Camden? How much capacity do we anticipate having? Rockport is gonna know more about what their development needs are because the, the need to expand Rockport's system and have more housing and all of that stuff that, that you guys were talking about, I think was sort of really important for both, both communities. So, and then the other thing that didn't get mentioned is that as part, what we discussed, as part of this agreement, that would also clear up the discrepancies about billing before. There was a little bit of a disagreement about this 15%.
But that's cleared up.
Well, as part of this, so we'll be, you know, forgiving, getting rid of that, for that period of time where there was. Right. And then also the late fees and all of that and, and the lawsuit. So when we vote on this, we're also voting to wipe that slate clean.
Super. Dave, Dave St. Laurent's been on for a long time and I didn't know if Dave, if you had any, anything that was important to address or any concerns or why you like this particular plan?
I think, I think everybody kind of worked through the bugs of what the issues were and the more we, we looked at resolving the issues, the more issues kind of came up. But we, we came to consensus with Rockport on, I think, all things. And I think this agreement represents, you know, a good, a good working relationship and things that'll keep everybody where they need to be. And I think, I think I'm satisfied with it and I hope Rockport is.
Do you, do you have any concerns or maybe you see it as a benefit with the additional monitoring time, space to do that?
My, all my concerns were implemented after I got involved.
So they, they got resolved, you mean, the concern?
Yes. Yep.
Super. Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
I just wanna say again, thanks. I'm totally impressed that you guys stuck it, stuck with us this late in the evening, honestly. Allison did mention there's some built-in, there'd be an annual, fees will be adjusted annually based on the Consumer Price Index. After two years, there'll be a review of the capacity and treatment needs. And then at the, at the end of five years, we get to continue it on as, as we see fit. Just wanted to mention that that's all built in for anybody who might still be listening.
Great.
Yeah, ideally we'll have a longer term agreement before that, but if we don't, there's a plan.
Do you have a motion that you'd like to make, Ken?
Indeed, I do, Chris. I move to approve the wastewater agreement for, to adopt it as, as written here. The wastewater discharge agreement between the town of Camden and the town of Rockport.
Second.
Any further discussion? And a vote? Thank you, guys. And I do need one last, thank you very much, and a second adjournment.
I think we voted to get rid of that, too.
Yes.
No, that was part of our vote, to get rid of that. Yes, everybody? So we, I think I, I think, oh, I see, it wasn't part of the motion.
Don't worry, it's gonna get dismissed.
All right.
Our vote doesn't matter anyway, apparently.
Good. And he already made a.
Motion to adjourn and now we vote on adjourned.
Good. We're good. Thank you.
I'll take one.
Yeah.
Thank you.